I'd like to call the Village Weston Board of Trustees meeting to order. We all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, Sherry, you could do a roll call.
Ermeling, here. Feeny.
Here.
Maloney.
Here.
Hi now.
Here.
White.
Here.
John.
Uh, he just texted me and he'll be about ten, twelve minutes late. He's on his way.
Scott, Scott, I mean.
Here.
Um, thank you. Um, public comments. Uh, at this time, anybody in the public that would like to make a comment? Um, there'll be no question, nothing back and forth with the trustees, but you have a moment to make a comment, please. And if you could, keep it to five minutes. If you want to come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kelly Amserood. I live on fifty-seven oh two Pine Park Street. I want to bring something up to, on maybe at the next agenda about the blight in the neighborhood, um, specifically referring to room house number seventeen oh six on Newport Avenue. I know many times this house has been reported um, with people reporting all the debris and garbage that is around that yard area and it's causing infestations of rodents and it just really needs to be addressed. I stopped one day to ask how we could do this and they said, obviously, this person plays a cat and mouse game, but, and this person is a hoarder. But that does not allow it to continue to go on this way. It needs to be addressed once and for all. I'm very proud to be a Weston resident. I like new neighbors coming into my neighborhood and they're fixing up some of these old houses and I'm really proud of that and of these young kids doing these things. So I'd like to bring it to the docket for the next meeting if we can.
All right, thank you. Um, there's no discussion at this point here, but I just want to, um, answer back that over the course of the last six months or so, I've been getting, people have been emailing me addresses and some photos and then I've been sending them off to staff, primarily our inspectors. And then they'll do a notice and then at a point then they'll go to a chief of Schultz. And I'd say we're at about a sixty percent success right now and so we're on, you know, third and fourth letters to get a little bit more, uh, poof behind it. So, um, we'll look into this, okay?
Thank you very much.
Um, we had some people just walk in. Uh, this is just public comment right now. If you're here for an agenda item, that's fine, but if you want to, if you have something to say under public comment, this would be your chance.
Sure.
Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Sir, Lee Anne Montague, four thousand six Shorey Avenue.
Okay.
Roxanne Breckie, forty-eight oh four Shorey Avenue.
Okay.
Nancy Jaeger, forty-seven oh two Shorey Avenue.
Okay.
We are here because we are looking to get better internet service in our area along Shorey to the Woodland.
Woodland app goes to Howland. Howland, I believe, has Charter, but it ends there. And we've contacted several times Charter and TDS and they said, oh, there's not enough people that live in the area, which, you know, we could petition and get more people to sign and we've got our neighborhood and everybody's been calling them and asking. We've called the village, which I'm sorry if we've bothered, but we did call TDS and Charter as well to request that. Um, you know, we, some work from home with schooling. I'm a school counselor, so a lot of classes, webex online and counseling sessions happening online and it's just really, um, been difficult to help provide for our own community, which I do for the children and parents. And then, you know, for the companies in our area to have very poor, you know, Frontier does what they can, but there's so many people pulling off both Alderson and Ryan Road that it's just really poor internet where we live. So we feel we're just coming to you to ask if there's anything that could be considered.
And there's only this one mile row, part of the road that has nothing, nothing. From Cam Phillips to here and, but beyond Cam Phillips, they all have stuff.
Can you just say your three addresses again? They're all Shorey Avenue.
Shorey Avenue, forty-eight oh four. We have, I mean, there's internet, but it's very poor or it goes out a lot. So forty-eight oh four Shorey.
The, the next one?
Four thousand six.
Okay.
And forty-seven oh two.
Okay.
And a few of you might giggle, but I actually just had my Frontier updated. We went from six MBs to twelve. When I know TDS can actually offer one gigabyte.
I, I.
And I've been working from home for the last year and a half. I work for Green Heck Fan. My job is very time critical. So I've had some encounters with internet issues that I've missed cutoff times.
Well, you had to pack up both monitors the other day.
Oh, yeah, last Monday, I had to actually go into the office and pack up and go in and we're actually at a level three, which means there's a COVID case and it was very, very difficult.
Okay. All right. We, we really can't talk about it, but.
Uh, just more for public information. Uh, tomorrow night at five or five-thirty at the Hadley Public Library, the, there is a listening session by members of the county board to discuss what should be done with American Rescue Plan Funds. Part of that can include broadband, uh, broadband efficiency.
Is there any way to attend that meeting without driving out to Hadley?
Uh, I don't have the whole.
Well, they don't have broadband.
We can't do that, right?
Exactly.
But, but appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, I knew that was going to, yep. So, and we, and we, staff knows and the board knows that Marathon County is addressing that right now. Um, our staff is also. And what, three years ago, I think we actually contributed a quarter million dollars, right?
But you missed our block.
Uh, TDS could only do the volume and we'll get it paid back once they get to a certain level. But we're, um, we know how important that is to the residents. We know that. It, it's a real big deal and it would actually spur more growth.
Yes.
And, um, so we, we are, I mean, Keith talks about it all the time, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Keep talking.
All right. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, um, any, any more public comments? Uh, anybody online? Nate, you handling this? Nothing online?
No, I don't have to handle this.
And one more time, any more public comments? Hearing none, we're moving on to, uh, to a hearing, uh, for operator license. Uh, just before we start this, so, uh, I'm going to ask the board if we could move up item number forty-five uh, under unfinished business, right after this hearing. Uh, after the hearing, Keith? Yes, just put it together. Um, we'd, we'd like to move up ordinance number twenty-one dash zero one four, an ordinance to amend section six point one oh four, parent five, issuance of alcohol beverage licenses, proposal from Attorney Edie. Uh, Attorney Edie has graced us with his presence tonight and thank you, by the way, Matt. But he has, uh, some people in town that he'd just like to join the two together so that he could enjoy their company a little bit more. So we're going to bring this up so that we do both of those right away and then, um, we can go from there. So, uh, number four, hearing for operator license. I'm opening the hearing and to hear comments. Uh, Riley Imbach appealing denial of an operator license. Riley? Just to state your name and address for the record.
Riley, uh, nine oh two North Third Avenue, Wasaw.
Okay. This is your appeal and, um, I, I know it's, you know, in, in public. But we've all read everything and, uh, so, um, I, I think where these have gone in the past is, um, tell us why you're appealing and why you believe you should take this of bartender's license.
Well, I have not had an alcohol-related offense in just about three years now. I guess most of the charges I hung with a lot of people, wrong people, which kind of led me in a bad path. And, uh, since then, I've turned my life around and I just, that's my main source of income right now is bartending and we don't have a lot of workers there, you know, so me not being able to close kind of, you know, doesn't work out a lot too, and yet I make more money when I close too. So not having that kind of inconvenience doesn't mean a lot. And I think I should have it because I have not had alcohol-related defense in almost three years now.
Okay. Okay.
Did you do rehab? Excuse me?
Yeah, go ahead. Yep.
I, I did go to the, uh, I had to go to a drug and alcohol course at the NTC that I completed. I never had to do like, uh, an AA thing or anything like that.
Okay.
I did go to that course with the NTC.
Okay. Lauren, anything?
I have nothing, thank you.
Uh, Barb? Nate?
Uh, your only, uh, alcohol-related offenses have been underage drinking, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, how old were you at the time of the offenses?
I think the last one was when I was just about nineteen.
Okay.
And I turned twenty-two in a month and a half.
Okay. Steve?
No question.
Okay. Um, you, you went through a, um, an alcohol assessment with NTC?
Yeah, I was like a.
I would have to say, um, standing here in front of the public, in public, you know, on camera, this is also part of it. You know, this, you're, you're just laying it out there, you know? You're, you're saying what's going on. I do want to read, um, what the clerk, we got a note here, right? Um, I, is it Michael?
Yes.
Yes, all right. Michael Erman, uh, Trill Sports Bar, Trillside Sports Bar. Uh, to whom it may concern, Riley Imbach, am I saying your last name right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Imbach is currently employed at Trillside Sports Bar. Riley is a responsible worker who is on time and performs his job duties promptly. He is a responsible person whom I had the utmost confidence in. Due to the current lack of workers, please don't deny him a license as it is currently way difficult to find help. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Michael Erman, Trillside Sports Bar.
Yeah, we're still.
Yep, yep, yep. Okay. Anything else?
Can I ask him one question?
Okay.
So one of the criteria is that, do you have proof that you completed whatever punishment you were given for these citations?
Uh, they didn't give me a certificate for the, uh, the NTC, uh, drug and alcohol assessment. I had to take that class to get my, it was either take my license away for, I think it was a year or attend a two-week class at the NTC, but I chose to do the class anyways because I feel like that benefited me more than this. I also needed my license to go to work, so.
But you paid whatever the fine was?
Yeah, it was like two hundred and fifty dollars or something and I had to pay for books.
And you completed whatever other programs you needed to do?
Yeah, whatever the, whatever I had to do, I completed.
And at least one year has elapsed since you completed all of that.
That course was when I was about, I think I was eighteen, little past eighteen and a half, maybe.
So if that's the case, that would be competent evidence that would, um, uh, require the granting of a permit on the rehabilitation section, so.
Yeah, that's what, I went to court at, uh, courthouse down there and they told me either a year of license suspension or take a two-week class. So I did the class.
Okay. All right, um, and you're paying higher insurance too?
What's that?
Paying higher insurance, probably?
Uh, not anymore since it's been so long, since I've had an alcohol-related offense.
Deal. Okay. All right. Anything else? Um, you have nothing for the head? All right.
Uh, no.
Uh, here, okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to close the hearing. You can have a seat and then we'll do the rest here, so. Uh, number six, action on the hearing.
I move to approve the, uh, I move to approve the license and override the recommendation from Chief Schultz.
We have a motion on the floor by Feeny.
I'll second.
And a, a second motion by Ermeling on the discussion.
The fact, uh, the fact that, um, uh, Riley was, uh, was underage, um, i- is a crime, but he's done his time. Uh, his supervisor or the owner of the, uh, bar, uh, Mr. Erman, uh, s- speaks highly of him and I don't think that, or considering that he's, hasn't had any other alcohol-related offenses in the last three years and his only crime was the underage consumption, I don't think we should hold that against him.
Barb, you have something?
Well, yeah, that's kind of where I'm coming from and it's, um, I mean, uh, young people make mistakes and I guess I hate to, um, penalize someone from working and, you know, it's just hard enough. So I guess at this point, and it wasn't, um, from what I gather, it just sounds like he was drunk, drinking too young. Um, he wa- I take it, he didn't drive, wasn't get, he didn't get picked up for drunk driving and didn't get, you know? Um, I, I just think sometimes, um, we, we shouldn't be penalizing someone if they're actually turned theirs, themselves around.
Okay. Any more in the discussion?
I, I, I'm going to be a no on it. Um, I, I think we have to respect what Clay has done and oversees it. Um, in his opinion, I guess there were some perhaps other items that, I don't know if you, I mean, you came across with the opinion of no, we should.
Just following the ordinance, that's what the ordinance.
Chief, chief has followed our ordinance and that's, we're going to dovetail right into this after this.
Yep.
Okay, so hearing more, no more in discussion. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Um, so carried, uh, six to one and approved, okay? Uh, Mr. President, I'm sorry, aye. You're right. Yep. I usually have better math skills, so, but Ye is not here right now. All right, um, good luck, Riley. Okay? Let's see, um, moving, uh, we're going to move up what I just said, uh, number forty-five under unfinished business. Number twenty-one dash zero one four, amending section six point one oh four, parent five, issuance of alcohol beverage license. Matt, your, your deal?
Sure, I was asked to take a look at, uh, some proposed changes to the village's alcohol beverage license ordinance and as I got into it, it looked like it was a bigger project than what I anticipated, uh, mostly because of the legislature's changes and that happens all the time where the legislature decides that they want to, uh, you know, add additional restrictions or require additional things or take away additional things that you might consider, uh, when issuing a license. And so with the changes to the law on arrest or conviction record that now apply to these alcohol license, it's really created a very complex, uh, analysis that has to take place, so.
Uh, let the record show that trustee Tom is, uh, is here. Go ahead, Matt.
And, uh, and the league of municipalities, they provide a lot of helpful information, but they really haven't even dove into the complexities of the arrest or conviction record part of it, uh, in part because it is really complicated and, uh, um, it would probably create an entire publication of its own if they did. Uh, and the law again may change. So the question is, do we change our ordinance to go into more detail so it's consistent with the current state of Wisconsin law? Or do we create, uh, more of a handbook that outlines what the board needs to look at, uh, when getting into these, uh, issues? And, uh, where it's really changed the most is with operators' license. So like the example here with, uh, with Riley, they're, you know, they've made, taken the position that, uh, you have to issue an operator's license if they meet certain criteria, no matter what their conviction record was unless it involves violent crimes or crimes against children essentially. Those are the only exempt crimes right now when it comes to, uh, and meth and things like that, drug-related, uh, you know, types of offenses. Uh, but other general offenses, uh, you, you know, can be, uh, can't be considered if the person receives an honorable discharge and doesn't receive a subsequent conviction after that, uh, or if they serve their time and more than a year passes without any other conviction. So in Riley's situation, if indeed he did not have any other contact, uh, after completing his treatment program and he paid the citation and more than a year passed by, um, we would have no choice but to issue him an operator's license. So, uh, so it's ma- it's going to make it very difficult for, I think, you know, the, uh, evaluation of the denials. Uh, if they fall within the category of having offenses, I think we still do that search and we figure out what crimes have been committed, but it's at that point we have to look at this rehabilitation, uh, part of the analysis and give the person the right to the hearing and then we just need to make sure we follow what the law requires in that regard then.
Okay.
And, uh.
Just a real quick catch-up, E. Um, we're at the hearing for operator license and we moved up number forty-five unfinished business so that Matt could kind of dovetail these two together. Okay? Go ahead. Okay.
So that's really what, you know, I, I mean, I think that, uh, in talking to Sherry, we were communicating back and forth. The only time I am concerned as the attorney is if you're going to deny a, a license. Not, not the ones that you, if they meet your criteria, uh, then fine, issue the license. But if you're going to deny it, then because of the new complexities of the law, I think you should just include me in the process at that point so I can look at, uh, the specific facts of that case to try to make sure that we follow the fairly complicated and, you know, continuing to change law in this area.
Okay. Any comments?
I like the idea that we can have more of a guideline. You know, I just.
Well, and for people, right?
Yes.
So that we can, we're back together in sync.
I mean, I don't want to approve one that, you know, it's, but I, I.
Right, so the, so I think the chief's rule is going to be the same. He's going to do the same search and identify the crimes. It's just that now because of the rehabilitation side of this, we have another level that we have to go through. You know, and then because they have now, uh, created, you know, exempt crimes and non-exempt crimes in substantially related language, we just need to be a little bit more, uh, I guess, careful on how we characterize the prior offenses. And we still have the right to consider arrests, uh, but they have to be substantially related and they have to be one of the exempt ones. So that's a big time arrest for some, uh, you know, child-related or, or, uh, methamphetamine or some very high level of crime.
Lauren?
Counselor, uh, in reading through your, your documentation, you're recommending changes to our ordinance specifically and, um, we're not ready to take action on it, or it's?
Aye.
Right.
Okay.
I, I think we have two options. Either we just simplify our ordinance and don't put so much into it and create a handbook that will dovetail with the league's handbook, which is a very good one. Um, and we'd really only have to focus probably on operators' licenses when it comes to the substantially related test and then when it comes to the rehabilitation part of that so that we just make sure that we follow that procedure every time.
So who will be putting this together?
I think we would be relying on Attorney Edie to assist in putting the handbook together and then it sounds to me like we just have a more generic ordinance.
I, I think that would be the better way to do it. Since the law, you know, who knows? Next election, there may be changes and you, you know, you just never know, so.
Well, this seems to be exactly what you're talking about. This is where the appeals are, you know, so. Okay. Super, thank you.
All right.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Oh, oh, wow, okay. I never miss you. Yeah, sorry.
Um, the question I, I did have is, reading through this, you were talking about that we cannot, um, hold a license for non-payment of taxes. Is that something that can be put back in there somehow? That's sometimes the only leverage we have.
You can have that in there. We just have to make that consistent across all of the licenses that we sell. So dog, cat, whatever other license you sell, if you have that requirement that they have to pay, they have to be current with all village taxes. Uh, as long as you're across the board with all licenses, you.
Not just singling out one or two?
Right, you can't just do it for this.
Okay, because I mean, like I said, that's sometimes, you know, the only leverage we have.
So that is one area that you need to take a look at and decide as a board whether you want to make that across the board or just remove it.
Okay.
Then, uh, Attorney Edie, I have a question. Let's say for sake of argument, uh, twenty years in the future, the board has a practice of, or the, uh, some board at some point puts in that, um, tax provision in all of the licensing and, uh, at every single non-operator license hearing, they waive the, the tax, uh, uh, the tax provision, but on operator licenses, they continue to deny on appeal. Would that create some issue? Yeah. But we just talked, we just said that we'd be across the board on all this. Right, right, right. Okay. But at the, at the appeal, if someone comes to appeal, uh, and, uh, and they're not paid up on taxes, um, and the board, and the hypothetical board, uh, says that's not an issue, will, um, will waive that requirement and that's on every single, uh, every single appeal of every single license except the operator license.
Right, that would be a constitutional problem based on the application, your, your application of the statute.
Okay.
So you have, you're consistent on the face of them all, but you're not applying them consistently.
Okay, okay.
All right.
Thank you. Yes, Shane?
If the individual do something which is related to that license, still he can appeal it or we can just deny it and say no appeal?
Uh, if someone that has a license does something, uh, that would allow you to suspend or revoke it, then you put them on notice of that and we would have to go through the hearing process and, uh, there would be, uh, you know, due process that they would have to present evidence and, and there'd be a determination made by the board as to whether it should be revoked or suspended. And then that would be an appealable issue to the trial court on a certiorari type review.
So can't appeal it to us, you got to go to the court.
Right, it would go through you first and then if they didn't like your decision, they could appeal it to the trial court.
Thank you.
Okay. Lauren?
Counselor, if, uh, a bartender at a bar knowingly sells to an underage person, that's, that's an offense substantially related to his license as a bartender. As far as I understand it, and correct me, that's grounds for non-renewal.
You have to have two in the same year.
Two in the same year?
Under the, according to the statute.
Or two in the same night?
Same year. Maybe that's how it should be charged, right? Two in the same night, then you go. Uh, no, they have a specific statutory provision addressing that because they wanted to make sure that, um, it wasn't revoked or suspended unless there were two, uh, within the same year.
So we would have to have a hearing on that. We couldn't wait until the next time his license renewal came up?
Right.
Thank you.
Any more? Okay, we'll get to work on that. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it. All right. Moving on to the next hearing, uh, hearing for comprehensive plan amendment.
Excuse me, sir.
Yep.
I have some correspondence for Mr. Edie.
Top, top.
Trying to save us money.
Okay.
Don't hurry, Edie.
Thank you, Matt. Hearing for comprehensive plan amendment, number seven, open hearing and hear comments. This gentleman?
For the first stage.
Right. Hmm, somebody?
It's Adam.
Number seven, hearing for comprehensive plan amendment, open hearing and hear comments. Any comments?
Uh, this is actually the, um, the Motholov's request.
Okay.
To change to INT. They are planning, they're actually here if you want to hear from them.
Okay.
Um, this went to the plan commission, um.
It was approved.
It was approved.
Yep.
They actually asked for a rezone too, so they're looking to adopt an ordinance first for the conference plan map amendment and then for the result.
Okay. I, I don't believe, I don't, I don't believe anything has to be said. We're just.
There was no opposition.
Right, no opposition, okay. So, um, I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay?
Question.
Yeah.
Is that related to this? Is that enough parking for that, uh?
Do they have to go through?
Give them all?
We don't know yet, just because that was just a, that was just a general plan.
Let, let me close the hearing first, then we can talk.
Okay.
I'm going to close the hearing. Hearing is now closed. Number nine, action on hearing. Go ahead, Shane.
Because usually when there is a funeral, I mean, place is packed and crowded.
Yeah, they haven't tied down the actual uses, so as staff, once we get the actual uses, it has to go through site planner view, so it has not done that yet.
But ju- just a thought though, on a funeral, you know, now, depending upon who shows up, I mean, there's, there's funerals that there's no way you could accommodate the party. No way.
Right, they may have.
And, and I, I, I don't wanna name them, but I could name several in this area over the last ten, twenty years that there's no way you could have had enough parking.
Right.
Okay, all right.
They, they are gonna be connected to the main site.
Yep. Okay.
We overlook there. We'll look at that during site planner view.
I think in this case, I'm just rolling. And look at, I didn't count the parking to see probably there. But to me, even for a small, you know, you could be probably, but although they can use the church parking area.
Right. Okay.
Anyway, I'll let him figure it out.
Yeah, how we can go by is what the ordinance states or what they need. So it depends probably about the, the ultimate size of the, the building they end up with.
We just wait until you make a analysis.
Yep.
This is a change in the comprehensive plan that's necessary.
For this to happen?
For them to.
For this to progress.
Yep.
Okay. So, um, under number nine for action, we're looking at, um.
I'll move to acknowledge the plan commission resolution twenty twenty-one dash PC dash zero zero five, recommending adoption of ordinance number twenty-one zero two six.
Second motion by White, second by Feeny. Anything on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. And we've got the next one.
Next page.
Yep. Lauren, you gonna follow?
Uh, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-one dash zero two six addressed staff to begin implementation.
Second?
Motion by White, second by Feeny. Anything on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
So note this next one would be a change in the zoning, correct?
Correct.
Hey, I did two out of three.
Motion.
Finish it off.
Motion by Herbling, second by Hushane. Zagami, excuse me. Uh, anything on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. All right, our third.
Certain of the plan.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks all for coming.
Thank you.
All right. Um, hearing for section seven four point six point oh six, street dimensional standards. Open hearing and hear comments?
Uh, this is.
You laughing because I hit it twice? Or just once? What? Okay, all right, go ahead.
This is, um, for changing the subdivision ordinance. So it comes before the board for the change. Um, this is in regards to making a small change underneath the footnote for the sidewalks.
Mm-hmm.
And this basically comes from, um, the Crestwood Acres.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, decision a few weeks ago. So this gives some leeway for, um, projects where we have to reconstruct a street. Prior to that, they were required. This way it gives, um, staff and the board some leeway depending on the project.
And we are working on walkability, connectivity.
There's a map though.
Right, okay. Good. Okay. Uh, Lauren?
Mr. President, in the discussions during the plan commission, there was, it was brought up, I believe by Commissioner Mydell, Trustee Mydell, about the, the map should come back to the plan commission. I think that was your comment. Right, that's what I, I mean, just to have some type of review on an annual basis to acknowledge it. In, in the past, staff has prepared that we depend upon them as far as their knowledge and traffic patterns that we have in the village. So that's the only thing that I have further to say.
Okay. All right, it's a pleasure.
Did you close it here?
Uh, you, you know what? That's what I'm gonna do. It's my pleasure to close the hearing. Hearing is now closed, action on the hearing.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Zagami?
Which one? There's two sections in there.
Acknowledge Plan Commission Resolution twenty twenty-one dash PC dash zero zero six. A resolution recommending adoption of ordinance number twenty-one dash zero twenty-five. An ordinance amending section seventy-four point six point zero six is street dimensional assembly.
I'll second.
Motion by Zagami, second by White, on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. What's your pleasure on the second ordinance?
Move to approve ordinance number twenty-one dash oh two five. An ordinance amended section seventy-four point six point zero six, street dimension standard.
Second? Motion by Zhong, second by Feeny, on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Minutes from previous meetings, seven nineteen, twenty twenty-one, Board of Trustees meeting.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Zagami?
Second.
Second by Feeny, on the discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. I, that was like a three-way, but I heard Nate first and Steve, and then I think the sound.
Clark can have the next one.
Yeah. All right, reports, minutes from boards, committees and commissions. I'm doing Blues, eighteen, finance.
Move to acknowledge items eighteen, uh, nineteen and twenty-two.
A motion to acknowledge eighteen, nineteen and twenty-two by Feeny.
I'll second that one.
Second by Mydell. Anything on the discussion?
Questions?
Yep.
Is there anything that the, uh, people that wrote these reports have to add recently?
Nothing. Good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good, similar question.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Reports from departments. Administrator. Any more?
No, nothing more, just the main item that I had discussed in my report was that proposal on the rate, remodeling metropolitan sewer district was kinda floating out there for the number of communities. But, um, we're gonna try working on some kind of a cost share potentially. Uh, we're, we're not, they're not gonna saddle the communities with a hundred percent of the cost and go after the discharger in this case. I guess we'll see how that goes. I, after looking at the letter, and we'll have this later on the agenda with the art of funding, it's possible perhaps something like this could be even getting some funding there because I know they're looking at how they're gonna finance this thing. And they, they do their financing more as a, on a pay-as-you-go basis essentially.
Okay.
So that was the main thing. And then, uh, footing excavations are supposed to be starting for the new building, uh, along King Phillips this week.
Okay, good. Any more?
Is it, I was just wondering, is that where in the lines, is that a result of what they're using?
That's what it seems to be. The hydrogen or the sulfate reacts with other things in the wastewater and then it creates this corrosive acid. Hydrogen sulfide gas, which is actually, I don't, this place is oxygen, but I guess it'd be, it would be poisonous in and of itself, correct?
But, but I, I seem to remember we at once had somebody that was bringing stuff in from out of state that was dumping and using stuff that was.
In our system?
Right.
Years and years ago, when I was last on the board. Or with our, there are federal regulations, Clean Water Act regulations that prohibit that kind of thing. So the trouble is sometimes it's hard to track those things down.
Get down to a, to a specific person or incident.
So are you saying on its own, it's okay to dump? But with other things down there, it, it counterreacts?
Well, I think the, well, the sulfate.
So on its own, it's not supposed to be dumped or.
But it is, it is one of those substances that's, that's prohibited to be dumped beyond a certain concentration or certain.
Without treatment. Right.
Right.
Okay.
So, if I understand right, I already had a, you know, I understand your discussion with him. Did he agree to go after individual and collect for him? Which means he'll have to contribute or still is pending?
From what I understand, this has been going on maybe for a year or more, trying to track this down. And, um, the city of Mozenia had representation at the meeting last Tuesday for Remont Metro. And they were expressing the opinion that they didn't think that there should be all on them. And they weren't necessarily, didn't express necessarily a willingness right off the bat to go out, to try to track this down further. But then the resolution or the discussion later was that they needed to proceed with a proposal to, or to get the bids on doing this lining. But they're gonna, are gonna look at different ways to fund it.
Okay.
We see, uh, gonna put the sampling device there to check, see where it's come from?
That's what they've been doing for, I understand, for over a year or more.
They haven't figured that out?
I think they do know.
They do know.
They're, uh.
Okay.
It's one of those situations, I suppose you're reluctant to maybe go after a, um, business, but anyway.
Okay. Any more? Um, twenty-eight, clerk, any more for Sherry? Or anything you wanna add?
I have nothing to add.
Okay. Uh, twenty-nine, finance, uh, anything for Jessica or Jessica have anything to add? No, okay. Uh, thirty, I, I know it's not blewed out, but Matt, you were feeling good last week. And then I, Matt's gotta leave at seven o'clock or a little bit before uh, for continued education and some training. Do you have anything to add, Matt?
I'm sorry, I apologize, there's no report. Uh, I was, I swore I had the variant of COVID last week, um, which was all negative, but I was out. So, uh, no official briefer in the packet for this part. Uh, however, just some things, uh, our budget is, um, this year's budget is fantastic. We had our preliminary budget, um, at safer board last week, which I was very ill at home. And, uh, other than that, it's been, uh, it's been very well. Everything's going good. Um, I have to leave to, uh, to start new recruits tonight. So, um, we just brought in, uh, three additional people. So they'll be good. Um, that should bring us up to, uh, right, right at the, um, forty-six, forty-seven, um, total roster. So that'll definitely help, help some, help cut some of that overtime for some of the part-time people, so.
Anything, anybody for Chief? Uh, yeah. Uh, Chief, are those, uh, going to be mostly part-time people?
Yep, those are all three part-time people.
And then, um, did the safer board, uh, budget for additional full-time employees?
Um, so, so what we looked at and, and honestly, what we tried to do is, um, when we put our budget together, we, we tried to keep it minimal for this year. Um, so we were really shooting for, uh, less than two percent. Um, and I think we, we hit that mark well below two percent. Um, so what we'd like to do is on one of the shifts, so we have, we have three different shifts, basically. They're three different colors. Um, and everyone's assigned to, to a shift. Um, so on one of those shifts, what we'd like to do, um, is increase the number from seven to eight. Um, and actually put that, that eighth person at station two, um, which will, uh, free up some of the battalion chief work. Um, but then also, um, allow us to do, uh, more transfers and, uh, it, it's, station two's busy, so.
It may not, it may not be a hiring of full-time, it may be an advancement. Is what kinda we talked about.
Yeah, correct.
It's kind of, it's kind of out there in limbo right now until we see how we're gonna fill it.
Yeah, we, we're, what we're just trying to do is, is, uh, get a year of data that says on Blue shift, we had eight people, we were able to do forty-seven percent more transfers. And we had, you know, we had zero mutual aid calls on Blue shift, uh, for the year. So we, so it worked good. So as opposed to saying, hey, we want those three positions across the board, we kinda wanna just take it a year at a time and see, see how that works. I'm, I'm very, um, I'm very excited to, uh, to see how, how it works. It, it'll be good.
Me too. And I'm glad that you're feeling much better.
Yes, that was horrible. I wouldn't wish that on anybody.
Any more, um, comments for Chief? Any ambulance is here? Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Um, one of our two ambulances is delivered, it's already in service, it's already been very busy. Um, the second one, uh, they're still waiting on, I don't know if it's chips now or, or something, but, uh, we're still waiting on chassis. So these, I don't know if you saw that picture of all those Ford truck chassis in a field and they were all just waiting on chips. Our two ambulance chassis were somewhere in there.
Yeah. Which one just delivered to one or two?
Uh, that one went to one and the next one. It was to.
Good. All right, thank you. Um, thirty-one, Parks and Rec. Any more for Sean or Sean, any more you wanna add?
Um, well, I did have a report in the packet, um, just wanted to touch base on, um, I met with our insurance adjuster today, he came down. Um, we had a leak that was found at the aquatic center last week. Um, we don't know exactly how long. It was a chase, a plumbing chase area that we don't enter all the time. Um, it could have been leaking for a few weeks, it could have been leaking since, for first week of June. Uh, we're not sure, but, uh, literally the whole room is covered with mold right now. Uh, so he came down to take a look at it, takes pictures and measurements, um, and told us to move forward on the process of getting the mold remediation completed. Um, it was just literally a pipe blew apart, uh, on the backside of a toilet. But because it's an area that's not happened by people, uh, there were no signs of it. So we didn't see anything, um, till the concession operator went in there last week. So, um, we'll be moving forward with that and then getting some estimates to replace, uh, the areas that, you know, that won't be able to just, because there's a drywall and there's a lot of pipe insulation and all the plumbing. Um, all the, uh, equipment that was in that room stored in that room is either rusty or moldy or both. Um, so we'll start that process.
Because of the leak?
Because of the leak. Yeah, it was literally spraying up, hitting the ceiling and, and covered. Whenever they flushed that toilet, it was spraying basically.
Okay, the joint failure or?
Um, well, so those toilets are wall hung, uh, like powder flush and they have an inch and a quarter supply. Oh, so when it flushes, water flies. And it was on, wasn't on the supply side, it was at, when it, when, once they push the button and then the water goes to the toilet, it was on that pipe. And it's just usually, it's like a inch and a quarter stand pipe that they have, um, you know, underneath the sink, basically that type.
I might, I might misunderstand something, but you, you, you just referenced the toilet.
Yep.
And we haven't been in there since June?
It's the backside of the toilet. It's a chase area, it's a plumbing chase area where all, all the plumbing is on the backside of the wall.
Got it, okay.
So the toilet's still work.
Yep, yep, but that's on the other side of the wall.
Right.
Which is frequent.
Right, yeah.
So would this be something that you might wanna change your SOPs and frequent that room? At least, is it a hard room to get to?
No, 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 it's on.
Put it on a weekly visit or something?
Well, typ- typically, um, the concession operators, that's where some of their stuff is stored. So they are in and out of there usually on a regular basis. So, well, they didn't have anything in there this year that they had to go in there and get out. Otherwise they are in there on a more frequent basis, so. All right, um, and then, uh, just to touch base, we did receive the second invoice, uh, the YMCA contract agreement. Our labor expenses, um, are definitely a lot higher this season than they've, uh, for previous years. So we're looking at around fifty-two thousand labor expenses through, through the seventeenth of July at this point. Um, we also had our two, or two payments on the admin agreement. Um, so our, and all our expenses obviously are up with the amount of days we were open, the warm-up that we had in June. Um, so it's been a busy year.
Is it fifty-two over last year or?
No, fifty-two thousand in labor.
Okay.
Expenses, uh, so like seventy-two thousand with the ten thousand per month admin. What's the difference this year compared to before? Um, well, that's, Jessica and I had looked at that when we got the first, uh, labor expenses. And the thing is, we're, we're comparing it to a year where we had our own manager. Um, and our expenses were quite a bit lower. I mean, we had, um, and we're doing breakdown of like our full month of June where they're doing, uh, per their pay periods. So some of it is reconciled in June, like the first one was June first through June nineteenth. And then their next one was reconciled till July, so it wasn't, uh, included in the first, uh, first invoice, so.
Uh, question, uh, Director. Uh, when you say that our costs were substantially lower, could you ballpark about how much less?
Well, we looked at two thousand nineteen labor expenses for just staff. Just staffing wages was around thirteen thousand and we were at twenty-five through, and that was for all of June, which is just through the first nineteen days of June. Um, but that was just staffing wages. I didn't look at the workman's comp and, you know, any payroll, um, tax expenses. So thirteen is, you know, not the right number, but that was just the wages. So if you had the payroll tax or the working's comp on there.
Four hundred and sixteen for two thousand nineteen budget.
Total, total wages?
Total wages and benefits.
Okay, yeah, and, but that's like you said, with our own manager. So we have budgeted a hundred and thirteen thousand for our contracted services this year, which is the YMCA. It's all in our contract services because we pay the labor, we pay the admin.
And it's a, it's a much higher elevation services and.
So, yeah, I mean, so.
It offered a lot more.
We closed this Sunday, so we'll have another, you know, from the July seventeenth through the twenty-second. Um, but we expect, uh, this last month is gonna be less because we had a lot of days of closure because cold weather, rain, et cetera, so. Um, the only other thing I wanted to report on is we did get the second payment from our concession operator. They have completely exceeded by, before the end of July, they had exceeded the entire two thousand nineteen season's sales.
Under.
Um, they're at sixty-four thousand dollars in sales through June and up July. Um, but we know that August has been slow, everybody's on vacation or at the fair, um, so, um, with the exception of this last weekend, Saturday and Sunday, uh, business really picked up, so, um, we're hoping to close up this year with, uh, you know, some additional people coming through the door, and we are, and us and Rothschild are the only two left open in the area, I lost the closer final pool yesterday, those other two pools last Sunday, so, um, Rothschild's open till the Sunday also.
Good. Okay, anything more for Sean? I, I, I have something very, very petty, and I, I shouldn't just call you or talk to Keith, but I've just gone by, out by Clough's Bar a couple times, and, and our, our entrance sign is, has the two bushes are almost over the front, I was gonna go out there and do it myself, but I thought Jess might jump on me.
I don't want to.
But I didn't do it. So, yeah, and I, and it's a nice looking bushes on both sides, but if somebody could just sneak out there, that, that'd be very helpful, but thank you very much.
Yep.
Has it been a good partnership with the Y? Cause I feel good about it.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
You seem a little hesitant.
It's, it's been the challenge, I mean, this is really our transition year, last year wasn't.
Right, right.
So, it's like trying to catch up for two years, cause we haven't had a normal year for two years, and we weren't with the Y two years ago, so. It's a learning process, we're still working through this, you know, um, what they're required to do, what we're required to do.
What are, what are you hearing on their side? Are you hearing good stuff or just trying to work it out?
I think we, we're trying to work things out, we know we have to do like a season wrap-up meeting with, with them, um, because, you know, when we got that first, uh, labor expense, we were like, wow, this is like, this is, this is looking bad, you know, we're gonna be way over budget. Um, so that we had, we wanted to see some detail and go through some things and, I, I think caused some contention with them because we were asking for, you know, some of that information.
I, I don't think details will.
No, no, and it was more of a, more of a, well, let's look at this together, you know, and understand where these expenses are coming from, because our daily expenses were a lot higher if you average them out, but one of the biggest things that came out of it was, we had four days of, three days of training preseason and there was four thousand dollars in labor expenses in those three days. Cause when you have thirty-plus staff there training, um, those expenses are quite a bit higher than we previously had for training. So, just looking at those numbers, I think they understood and I understood and I talked to them, you know, this is, we're working to keep this partnership going strong that we both need to, you know, discuss these things, so. Um, definitely probably more training needed, um, just because there's still things that Nate, you know, comes and helps out with. I mean, you know, from swim lessons to rentals to birthday parties, that was all stuff that they didn't have to do any of it last year, so it was like a surprise to them this year when we're, when we were going through all the things they had to do, selling passes, um, you know, we probably should finally have some good internet out there, TBS finally tied the fiber in last week, so they're only about, you know, three months behind, so we did, we've struggled with the internet all, all year, um, phone's been a struggle, so hopefully TBS will take care of that too. That would be two big things off of our plate if we can get that hammered out, so, um, but.
Thank you. Alright, um, how about thirty-two, planning and development, Jen?
I don't have anything additional unless you have a question.
Okay, any questions for Jen, anybody? Thank you. Uh, thirty-four, Chief?
I just wanted to point out in my report that I think we set a record for Evers Metro, we had nineteen hundred and sixty-one calls for service in the month of July. Uh, fourteen hundred and eighty-eight were in the village, that's really higher than we usually have for an entire month in all three municipalities. Um, it's kind of a smattering of just service-related stuff. Um, a couple other brief updates, we had an officer bit last week by a female during an arrest, armed. Uh, we had another officer kicked last weekend during an arrest, so we've been really busy, um, use of force reports are coming at a little higher rate due to the uncooperative nature of most of our people we're coming in contact with. Again, relates to a lot of mental health, a lot of welfare checks on mental health-related issues, which seems to be tied to our drug issue. We have focused some efforts on some of our drug targets and we had one event where we had a lot of resources and we got a significant amount of product off the street last week, so, um, we are seeing some, some results from our efforts, which is encouraging, so, but overall, very busy.
Yeah, thanks for what you do. Any questions for Chief? Can you look at hiring people?
Uh, yes, uh, I apologize, we are interviewing one tomorrow, very strong candidate with experience. Um, if we hire him, we will have one more opening. Um, so currently we have two in field training, and then a third, our third opening will be interviewed tomorrow and then no more applications for our last opening.
Okay. Well, thank you. Yep, thank you. Um, thirty-five, Michael, what works?
The main thing, the Crestwood project is still moving forward, um, it seems, the torrential rainfalls we had, um, I guess last week, there's some, uh, concerned residents out there, some of the storm sewer structures, I guess, tried to, tried to explain to them that nothing was finished out there yet, it was still, you know, uh, some of the storm sewer is installed, but the ditches aren't graded yet, so water is pounding. So, uh, I tried to get that through, but, uh, you know, the underground infrastructure isn't on Kirk and Rodney, uh, concrete work started, um, last week, so. You know, the contractor appears to be on schedule or slightly ahead of schedule based on what they submitted with their bid, um, earlier this year, so by mid-October, it should be wrapped up and good to go, um, the bridge project on Ross is, uh, going just a little slower than initially anticipated, the southbound, westbound traffic, uh, I don't even wanna call that. Uh, Bridge Deck seemed to have a lot more, uh, spalling than, uh, initially, um, thought, so, uh, that and the rain kinda added both, uh, I don't know, three, four days to their, uh, schedule there, and then, um, I guess the only other thing is, uh, we have, um, if you, if you see Jim Plata, he is retiring at the end of the month here, so, um, we'll have.
One more person?
Yeah, wish him, uh, congrats on his, uh, a little over, I think, a little over twenty years with the Village Weston, so. And then, uh, we had seven interviews, uh, more or less like all of last week to, uh, fill, um, the vacancies there, so.
Uh, there, uh, I just wanted to, uh, pass along some of the gratitude from, uh, from, uh, my former neighbors in Crestwood Acres, they were really appreciative with the way that everyone followed up and how, uh, how really, or how you guys got things quickly up to speed following the storm.
Sure. Okay, thank you. That's, uh, not the feeling I had from some of them, so.
Well, probably only one or two, right, Michael?
Correct, yeah.
It just has to run its course, and I think, uh, staff is in a, in a different state on, on responses and stuff, and I think that'll help a lot, so. It's, it's just gotta get through it, it just has to. So I was running through Rothschild and they've got two or three streets in full disrepair too, so, uh, the nice thing about theirs is it's all level. And, uh, this, this neighborhood is very elevated and it's gone through hell for years, decades. I mean, uh, talking to a few of those people up on Douglas, uh, Keith and I and Michael were up there, I mean, the water going through those, the backyard of three different blocks, it's unbelievable, and, uh, so that is gonna be stopped, so that's gonna be a whole new deal when this is done.
I remember, uh, one summer, my brother, my father and I actually had to dig an underground drainage, uh, contraption to pump it all out, and the fact that, um, the fact that other people have done that and that it's going to be significantly less in demand is a great relief.
Very much so, but thank you, Michael.
Yes.
And, uh, you didn't say about the poor cement on the bridge?
Yeah, they did.
That I am, so Michael was out there doing the happy dance today, so, getting closer, so, three, three days or four days of, uh, letting it sit, so. Have you just put the handprint in there? I have put the handprint in there and a truck tire print in there, so, yeah, so. Um, let's see, uh, Nate, technology, anything you wanna add or, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, sorry Nate.
Michael, is my step could've finished that easement, I've been working on it for coverage.
Yeah, I'll check with Josh, I know there's one, there's a discrepancy with how when the pipe was installed in the original document, um, the pipe was, the pipe isn't installed where the initial plan is, it's off by a couple feet, and the easement did reference the centerline of the pipe, it referenced the, a set easement line, so I know they're trying to do some legal research to see what can actually be done, do we need to remove the existing or can we add to the new easement, so.
I'll, I can follow up and get you an update on that one.
I think he's just taking too much.
Yeah.
I understand those difficulty when you do the easement, but still, you know, in that area, there isn't anything, as far as I know.
Yep.
There shouldn't be difficult to move the easement or make it work.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any more for Michael? Thank you. Uh, now thirty-six, Nate, technology.
Nothing to add?
Nothing to add, anything for Nate? Nothing, alright, thank you. Uh, thirty-seven, work product transmittals, uh, July building permits.
I moved to acknowledge items thirty-seven and thirty-eight.
Uh, moved to acknowledge by White.
Second.
Second by Manel, anything on the discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry, so carry, consent agenda. Um, you wanna do them all together or pull a few off?
Move to approve, uh, forty, forty-one.
Oh, well.
Move to approve with the consent agenda.
Yep, uh, moved by Dong, uh, second by Ermling, anything on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry, ordinances, none? Resolutions, number forty-three, resolution number twenty-two-one dash zero-two-two, a resolution designating officials authorized to declare official intent under reimbursement bond regulations. Motion to approve by Ermling.
Second.
Second by Manel, all those in, uh, anything on the discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry, forty-four, resolution number twenty-two-one dash zero-two-three, a resolution to change the name of Schofield Avenue.
Mr. President, I know we discussed about, uh, you brought up the fact about a token reimbursement for businesses or residents to, to accommodate the changes. Is that still in the works? I, I didn't see it specifically called out in here.
I, um, I brought it up as a suggestion, um, I, I would pull it back now. I, I don't think there's, there is one, a business if they wanna change the name in a way that, that will cost a lot more than a token. But I, I just don't believe there's a whole lot, um, un- under this spot though, we do have somebody that we set for approval, Jim Penasal, who's an owner on Schofield Avenue and gonna be, uh, you know, moving his place still on the same avenue, so at some point, he'd like to talk at this point.
Uh, he actually raised his hand.
Oh, okay, so why don't we just do that right now, Jim, can you hear us?
I can.
Okay, Jim, go ahead.
Okay, uh, Jim Penasal, five thousand two Arrow Street, Weston.
Thank you.
Um, I own Patriot Auto Repair, uh, spoke with, uh, Village President, believe on two occasions in regard to um, changing the, the name of Schofield Ave. Um, I'm in supportive, or I should say, I'm not opposed to it, I think maybe I could use a different name, um, to give us more of an identity as a village, however, there, there is a substantial cost involved to all businesses, not just the one, uh, previously mentioned in the meeting. Um, so I checked into this myself, I'm moving four blocks east from where I'm at, um, and so I know of these costs currently because I just incurred many of them, um, to change from twenty-nine oh one to thirty-seven oh two Schofield Ave, essentially a school, uh, an address change, right? That's the only thing I've done, um, I do have to change, I mean, a, a little thing is business cards, right? So I only have two full-time employees that have business cards, the cost of that was two hundred and twenty-nine dollars just for business cards, and I only have two employees, so if you look at Target or Associated Bank or Pick and Save or Farm Home, any of these large organizations, their cost is significantly higher. Um, the, uh, another cost that I have is in legal fees, um, so uh, Patriot Auto Sales is the, the car dealership that I have, and Patriot Auto Repair is the auto repair shop that I have, both of which have leases, both of those leases need to be rewritten and then filed with all of these state entities um, in order to be in compliance and get, uh, occupancy and, and permission from the state to continue operating. Um, just to change those leases, right now I'm over a thousand dollars in legal fees, um, and again, this is a small outfit that, that doesn't, I assume there's, there's something involved in changing a liquor license, um, and changing uh, other, other sales establishments, not just auto repair. Um, even if we look at auto repair, there's several other auto repairs right on Schofield Ave, um, which are affected. So I, I just feel like if the village is going to make this, there's a substantial cost to business owners that should be uh, taken into account, also the cost of the village itself, right? How many cross streets do we have on Schofield Ave? Many of them, and each one of those has a sign, which needs to get changed. Um, I can't imagine it's less than two hundred dollars per sign, times many signs, I mean, the village is gonna be in it for twenty grand, just in the village's cost alone, um, just in signage, so I think there's way more to this than just changing the name, um, that needs to get looked at. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Jim. Um, you all heard some of his comments, so, um, I, I think staff, uh, did talk a little bit about changing the signs and, uh, we believe, I, I think staff believes that we can have those done under tourism dollars, cause that, that should fall under there and, and possibly even do DC Everest Boulevard a little differently. Um, Shane brought up something that prior to getting to that intersection, you could put something in the boulevard, that we would actually call it a boulevard, that would let you know what's kinda coming up too, something that he saw down on a, a, a very nice, well-done street in Madison, on Washington Avenue, I believe.
East Washington.
Uh, East Washington, so, um, yeah, I, I, I would bet Jim is right, I bet there is some cost on that, um. Um, I, I just think, we've, we've looked at this several years, we've been, you know, twenty-five years, uh, I just think there's some definitely confusion, some misunderstanding on who it is, on where, where we even are, claiming that to be either the village you live in, township, municipality you live in. Um, um, I, I stand corrected that I first thought it should be village, that it should be claiming Weston, or anything Weston. And, uh, it's something that we kinda all talked about, uh, individually or, and some staff, that we, we're not trying to be, uh, not inclusive, you know, so I, I think by going with the school district, I think that, that carries everywhere, in fact, uh, Keith did mention, and why don't you go ahead?
I was just gonna say, I did contact Chris Gilmore, the superintendent of DC Everest Schools and mentioned that we were considering this resolution to, uh, rename to DC Everest Boulevard, and she said simply, no worries, you know, that was a good idea.
That was a, almost like an honor or pleasure a little bit, that, uh, I did, I did have one call, um, from a radio station, and, uh, she had apparently heard my comments, um, that, uh, that I, I thought we should do like a token, like Lauren said, and she says, I, I just, I'm strictly opposed to taxpayer money, and not thinking quick enough, I said, well, this ain't taxpayer money, I mean, what do you mean? Where, of course it's taxpayer money, well, I mean, once she kinda played with me a little bit for a couple minutes, I said, you know what, you're absolutely right. Anything the government, anything the village pays for is taxpayer money. Uh, she, she believes that it should be completely borne on the residents or businesses of Schofield Avenue and that other taxpayers shouldn't have to pay. I, I would have no idea how to set a number, like, like we said, a token or something to help it on, um, I don't know what it would cost to do all that, we did think that, I think as you read here, January first, um, I, I know when I was actually talking to Jim, he had just received an invoice from Sun Printing and, uh, and we, I mean, I don't know, I kinda thought we were both kinda adjusting a little bit, maybe not, maybe it was only me that, you know, he's got till January first to use those cards up, then he's gotta use different ones, but, but it is a two hundred dollar bill, it's, it's exactly true, there's business cards up and down there, but, I mean, or we do this forever and never bring it up again and we, we sit at, not at all, these are, these are great neighbors, Schofield, Rothschild, everybody around us, great neighbors, I, I just, I believe personally that it needs to be changed, so, I truly do.
Uh, you, you and I have talked quite frequently on this and related issues and, um, I, I think you're right, I mean.
Uh, you, you and I have talked quite frequently on this and related issues and, um, I, I think you're right, I mean. Growing, um, growing up here, uh, graduating high school here and now serving here. I don't know many people that identify strictly, uh, with the village. It's all about the D C Everest Evergreens and hopefully beating Spatch when we play them, uh, this year. Um, so, no, I think that, uh, I think we should, um. I mean, if, while I understand that there may be some, uh. Some, uh, financial, uh, issue with business, with business owners, uh, it's. Uh, we can do it now or we can have this problem multiply many years into the future.
You know, it, it, it was a combination on this name, I, I actually think Hushang brought up Everest. I think D C somehow got brought in, in a conversation I was having with Keith. He thought the timing of Boulevard is perfect because we've been taking so much heat on that. The road and the structures and the W's and all this stuff, I personally love that road, I think it looks great, I think it's high maintenance, I think. In the future, we could change some of the maintenance issues, but to, to put Boulevard in there, it's perfect, it's just perfect, it is a Boulevard.
It is a Boulevard.
Exactly what it is, and, uh, I, I, I think it's, it's gonna resonate, I mean. D C Everest, I'm not from here, but D C Everest enjoys one heck of a reputation and on alumni. I mean, holy man, uh, at every, every event, whether it be educational or, uh, sport events, anything, you know, and. We actually talked about, uh, when, uh, Yi and Hushang and I happened to be around talking about streets, uh, with Jen and Keith. Um, we talked about some of the teachers' names, you know, the first one that came up was Stefan A. And, and then some other, uh, educationals, there's, uh, somebody that Yi brought up that takes off every summer and goes and personally. Uh, dismantles landmines.
Tim Harris.
Yep, yep, and, and then there's, uh, 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 Anan, am I saying it wrong? That does a huge history deal, I mean, he is renowned, uh, all over, that he does these huge history events, and we, we've got, we're just blessed with some really good people. In this entire school district, so, I think the timing is right, I will be voting for this.
And D C Everest was a pioneer in this community, not just in the village of Weston. That was one of the reasons why the Everett Fredo P was chosen because of it included.
Right.
A larger area, because it served a larger area.
It, it, you could almost, I think you would have a majority vote if you took these southern communities. And asked if we would all have one name, it would be Everest, it, there's no doubt about it, I, I just truly do. Um, and I think Jen was doing some research, uh, is it David Clark or Dwight Clark? David Clark, okay, so, anyway, um, so we heard from Jim, um, anyone else wanna talk about this resolution?
Well, I think I've been pushing for this name change for more years than what I, I care to even think about, I mean, you know, and it always was. I mean, I understand, you know, but every time we postpone it down the road, we're involving more businesses, I mean, if we would've did this. Year, years ago, we would've.
When we became a village.
Yeah, we want to been involved, I mean, cause everything changed.
You know, case in point, this, this extremely excellent Oriental market wouldn't be called Schofield. You know, they named it after the street and it would be called maybe after the street, maybe after Everest, I have no idea. Um, but they chose that because of the street name and, uh, I would hate to have five, ten, seven more businesses in that same dilemma. I really do, so I'm gonna buy a lot of egg rolls there to help them, I'll put some money in the.
Couple of weeks, get the new sign up.
Hmm? Yeah, that's pretty smart, Tom, in a couple of weeks, he'll have enough money to feed by egg rolls, so, um. Are you gonna?
Well, yeah, I just, you know, I just, here the, about two weeks ago, it was kinda funny because I was. Somebody was saying where something was and they said that it was in Schofield and I said. No, it's in the village of Weston, and she goes, well, it's, you know, the, the post office is Schofield. And the streets are Schofield, she said, it's in Schofield, and I said, no. And then finally she looked at me, she says, well, what's the difference, and so I explained to her. That if you think you're in Schofield and you file your papers that you're in Schofield. I says, the village of Weston loses money because that's based on, and she kinda, finally she goes. Well, she says, how is a person supposed to know?
You know, twenty-five years ago, we had a campaign, uh, to have people start using their addresses as Weston.
Nice.
Uh, e- even on the computer, I constantly change it to Weston and to Schofield, and we might need to have another, um, education point on that, go ahead, Yi.
Um, so just a quick question to staff, I know that there hasn't been a determination of how much this is gonna cost, but do we have some sort of like a ballpark or anything?
To, to the village?
Yes.
Or the street signs and stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we haven't, we haven't worked into that very deeply at this point, I don't know, Michael, what's a street sign, if we were to make the sign ourself, ourselves?
Yeah, I mean, the materials are probably about fifty dollars, you know, for, you know, an intersection, so, um, then our labor, you know, probably. Say maybe an hour for, you know, you know, half an hour for two guys, an hour total.
So you don't foresee it being like five thousand dollars or more than that, okay, just wanna be sure.
I know, it's a good point, good question, yeah, good question, very good.
I just don't want, um, one of, like, constituents calling saying you spent five thousand dollars, so, I, I just wanna.
You know, uh, the post office is in Weston, you know, I believe it says, uh, Schofield slash Weston, right on.
Yeah.
Schofield Weston. It is.
But I just bought some appliances and I tried to convince them that it was supposed to be that.
From the post office?
No, from.
I'm just.
Retailer.
Retailer.
Uh-huh.
And. She said that's the way it comes out.
Yep, yeah.
People say invalid address.
Yeah, well, how many, it took us years and years and years to get Weston out on the highway. And I, I'm, I'm telling you, I, I still come from Green Bay and I still smile when I see Weston and Whitmore, I do, I get a kick out of it. I, cause I remember we, we didn't have it, you know, I think it's pretty neat.
Mr. President, I will make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty one dash oh two three, a resolution to change the name of Schofield Avenue to D C Everest Boulevard. I'll second.
Motion by Zong, second by Feeny, any more on the discussion?
I, I just wanna make a comment that I'm fairly confident the clerk of the D C Everest School Board would be supportive of this. I just wanna put that out there.
There you go, yes, there you go. Uh, hearing no more, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, and, uh, on that positive note, Jen secured that name last week. So just in case someone heard about that, she kinda filed for it at Marathon County, right, Jen? Woo, good job.
Thank you.
Alright, yep, alright, um, number forty-four, uh, forty-five is done. Forty-six, update in American Rescue Plan A R P A funds, A, consider directing some of the A R P A funds to Safer and Everest Metro Police Department. Um, I, I, let's just roll over into this, I saw on there.
We've talked about keeping this on the agenda, we're making decisions on what we wanna do, I guess, give me, if I could.
Yeah. Go ahead, go ahead.
More. Dive into letter E here, um, Jessica had, uh, pointed out an article in the, uh, municipal municipalities. Um, July issue, I believe, well, um, that, that goes through some of the. Uh, pitfalls, uh, I guess, if you will, and things to look out for as we're looking at how they spend this money, and I know she reminds me. And wants the board to be aware that, you know, we have, we're gonna have to go through an audit on this, so. She included in the packet, the, uh, letter from Whitfley, or I guess it's a guideline from Whitfley.
Yes, we get, um, emails all the time on, uh, our bias, just happen to get this one, and I'm like, well, I'll just sort in the packet. And it's just part of the agenda packet, as prior to anything else being added to it, just so there's just another piece of information.
Okay, um, yeah, I know there's some discussion about, you know, using this only per, or primarily focusing on. Uh, things that are like a one-time.
Yeah.
That's, I think those are guidelines that the county is using in their listening sessions and City of Wausau and O'Toole. Um, so I, we also have access, there's access if you wish to take a look at what outline they're using in their listening sessions. From their, uh, Human Resources and Finance Committee packet in July as well. Um. So I guess just some things to be aware of, you know, I guess we're certainly supportive of the next item on the agenda to the extent that it's. Per- permissible within the guidelines of, of our fund spending.
Well, you know, so I, I brought up forty-six because two other neighboring communities had earmarked, I mean, or whatever you wanna call it, they didn't actually spend the money, they're not, didn't actually pull the money, I know we. Probably can't or it's gotta be audited, but I think they just wanna re- remind themselves or put an earmark in there. That if it, it could happen, I mean, this, these policies and these decisions are changing every day. And, um, it, it, it's kind of a little nerve-wracking for me to, to see what is and is not, so like broadband is okay. And I just go, okay, so, you know, actually, you can, you can correct all the broadband, you can move into a community. You know, so it, you know, it's seriously, you can, I mean, I know it's a big deal, but when you make a decision to move, you make sure that you have connectivity. Um, you know, so what broadband is okay, um, some of this water projects are, are okay, I, I get it, but I also see stuff changing every day. And we're, we're not gonna have the okay or even the funds now immediately, I think it's over a year or two that it's gonna come, right?
We have half of it.
We have half of it now, right, I, I'm, uh, my thought wasn't to just right now take it and spend it, it was just to maybe earmark, so once we get to the end of it. We still have this opportunity to give it to two, uh, very essential services that we all need and rely on, so, that was my thought. So not, not the write a check today, Yi?
Um, uh, thank you, Mr. President, um, I guess I just want a little clarification, if I recall, the official guidelines has not even been completed yet though, or?
No, they're still called interim final rules.
That's what I thought, okay.
Not to, not to be confused with the interim to the interim of the final interim.
Right, it's still an interim.
And, you know, and, and the other two communities did exactly the same thing, they didn't spend them, they didn't cut a check. They're, they're just gonna earmark those funds in a certain.
Dollar mark, ten percent earmarks.
Ten percent, yep, ten percent at Schofield and ten percent at the village of West, uh, town of Weston, I don't know if other ones have done it. Um, that's just what they did, I confirmed both, go ahead, Lauren.
I think it's a good idea to put in there, if they're el- if they're extend, each agency has equitable eligible expenses, if they don't have it eligible, you can't spend.
Well, we, we wouldn't do it.
It leaves you out.
Just, I mean, half the staff would, uh, hold up, you know, can't get through, so we, it would definitely tell us, but, that was my whole point.
I, I'm curi- I'm curious, is it clear, what would you use the funds for, what, what, I mean, you must be exposed to stuff on your side, just saying. Be aware that these funds could be available from, you know.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's discussions, um, starting that I haven't seen before in the. At the state level with the chiefs on some of these funds, and it's in the beginning stages on asking about staffing levels. There is some language in there, which we haven't, which hasn't been brought up for law enforcement to, um, use for recruitment. Or the use for getting your staff back to pre-pandemic levels. Some of that's tied in some of the languages used due to increased violence and some of it says gun violence. Um, which has to be directly proportional, which is super vague, um, but there is talk about. Um, staffing levels, which we are in dire need of with, and increasing staffing for policing, but. Uh, I think the way it's worded is gonna just spark a lot more conversation and questions because it's. Um, you know, some of the stuff I've read is directly proportional to violence, well, how, and there's a lot of people asking, what does that exactly mean? And who's gonna be at the forefront of that to try to, um, explain and how are they gonna audit all this, so I think the conversations are still. In the beginning stages on some of that.
Uh, one of the, uh, one of the things that I'm really, um, passionate about and really pushing for. Is at least some of this money to be directed for premium pay. Because a lot of us could just pick up and work from home, but, uh, police, fire, EMS, none of them could, they didn't have. Uh, they didn't have that opportunity and they. They certainly, uh. Uh, have a great response time and a, and provide a wonderful service for us. But because they never got to, uh, got to work from home, work remote, any of that, they deserve, uh, a little extra premium pay above and beyond. Not saying the whole, uh, two twenty thousand each, but some of that should be specifically earmarked for premium pay, Lauren?
I, I think I asked this question previously of Jessica about overtime cost, and you said, that is not considered premium pay? Or could it be considered premium pay?
I don't think so, it's got, I don't believe.
Staffing premium, so if, if Chief Schultz had to fill in a shift and he had to pay somebody overtime to fill in a shift.
That, that was more covered with the cares funding.
Okay.
Right.
This is more for premium pay.
Okay.
It sounds more like a one-time.
Right, yeah, and that, and that's where Milk, I'm just gonna share with you, uh, the mayor of Schofield and Milk. Uh, Milk has been, uh, commenting several, several times at some of the meetings joint and just privately. Um, that he is pushing extremely hard for a one-time pay for all. And whether it be, I mean, he thought a couple thousand up to like five thousand dollars to.
Like Walmart did for their.
Thank you, right, like, like many people did, I mean, a lot of companies did something for the ones that had to show up every day, that, that could not, not stay. So, um, anyway, yeah, pardon?
What do you do about the office staff that had to show up every day?
I'm sorry?
Office staff that showed up every day. Your election workers, I mean, they didn't have the chance to stay home, they had to be out amongst the public just like, you know.
You can, I'd make, uh, I'd make a similar argument for those that had to show up, but a lot of the, um, at. Several points, we did have a lot of even sat here working remote. I'm not sure how many, uh.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, it's not about the, you know, these, these two agencies, it, it's, it's not a. About comparing the, these two agencies to the road crew or to, you know, workers at retail or food establishments or hospital workers. You know, I, I, I get it, I mean, some, some had to show up, some didn't, yep, we had to carry around in our company essential worker paperwork in case we got stopped. You know, it, when, when a lot of places were closed for a month, uh, we had to keep going, nobody stopped.
I don't know the road crew were from home.
Nope, they didn't, they were, we had that discussion many, many times, yep, yep.
Mr. President, I, I just have a remark as well too, if I recall, this could be your, usually utilized towards non-profits too, right, um. So I was thinking of something like the blessing backpacks as well too, or, you know, one of the food pantries in the local area here as well too. Um, maybe also looking towards directing some funds towards them as well too, just because during the whole pandemic, they were working. Quite a bit overtime as well too, to provide food for our, uh, for our family members as well too, so. I'm not saying that I, and I'm not trying to direct the attention away from the, uh, from, uh, E N P D and Safer here, but I just wanna remind us of all those as well too.
Yes. So, there, a decision doesn't have to be made, I, I wanted to bring it up the last meeting and, uh, maybe we roll it over and see what. Kind of decisions come down for how you can spend it, but, uh, I was, I just thought we should, uh, do what our neighbors are doing and. I, I wasn't part of it, but I got notified after they did it, so I.
Again, I think we have to make sure we're doing one-time funding, I know increasing staff, it is.
Right.
A great time to do it, but when that money runs out, what do you do with it?
Exactly, you know, it's a sun, sunset clause, so, and that, that's why the ten percent number would just be. What other two neighbors are doing, you know, one is doing it with E N P D and, uh, also Riverside, and the other one is doing it, uh. With, uh, Safer and with, uh, Everest Metro.
I, I just wanna add that I believe, uh, the Wisconsin County Association has recommended that, uh, one, we don't start, um, uh, actually earmarking where we're gonna have, uh, allocate the money just in case things changes. I'm supportive of this, I'm not against it, um, uh, and, um, uh, obviously two here is just to make sure that, um. Uh, just to make sure that we're not over, you know, that, that the money that we're, um, contributing towards doesn't go towards, um, continuous, count, uh, occurring costs.
Clause, uh, my thought was when we finally actually do spend the money, uh, this footnote would be in place. And we, at that time, we can still say no or yes, or spend it all towards water, spend it all towards broadband. But at least there's a footnote or a marker in place that brings it up now. I guess we don't actually have to take action because we'll remember it, I certainly will, I'll bring it up, but that's why, Bernard.
Uh, I'd actually rather make the motion, uh, this evening, so I move to allocate American Rescue Plan Act funds from the village of Weston's. Uh, estimated two point two million of funding in proportion of up to ten percent each to the Everest Metro Police Department. And South Fire, and South Area Fire Emergency Response to the extent each agency has eligible expenses.
Well, what Lauren said just, just before a second is made, um, and is, um, uh, as Jessica would say is able to or, is that enough?
That's part of this motion.
Is that enough, okay.
If the agency has eligible, if they don't have eligible.
Then, then you can, yeah, okay, then it's moot point. Okay, then it's moot point. Uh, do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Uh, so we have a motion for the resolution by Deanie and a second by White. Any more in discussion? Go ahead.
Um, I I would advise the board not to actually make any official decision until the official uh uh criteria comes out. I would hate for us to make a decision here now and then all of a sudden the rules end up changing later as well too.
Well, I think this takes us out.
I I I.
I I agree. I I I agree with you. I I think that if we start down this path and I do believe, I mean, I I I certainly believe that our our police do need some monies and, you know, to assist them in recruitment and stuff. And I I'm reading here that it is an acceptable use, but I'm afraid that if we start down that path, it we're getting ahead of ourselves when we don't know what other communities are doing, what the league is recommending or or even what the treasury is recommending. I just wish that it was more solid before we take the steps to designate how we're gonna be using the money.
Right, that's that's why this is just since that top line allocation. It's not saying we're going to spend it on X Y Z. It's just the same fifty bucks every month that I allocate for gas in my personal checkbook. It's not saying I have to spend it.
I just wanna point a clarification. Maybe Trustee White would be able to uh provide a little bit of clarification. If the board votes this down here, right, hypothetically here, would uh what it would do, it would take a majority of the people to vote against it to recede, to bring this back where we can.
We'd have to have a motion to rescind the action and it takes uh two thirds of the vote.
And that would take more, it will be more complicated, moving forward in my in my opinion here, if we did end up voting it down. I would prefer for us not to act on it yet until we have that, because I would hate for us to send a obviously a mixed message or make this a little bit more comp- complicate the process. Compared to when we can just wait another month or so.
Yeah, Barb?
I guess I I agree that at this point, I think we're putting the cart before the horse. We really don't know what what is all, you know, going on. And just looking at that has eligible expenses. There again, if you're looking at it as eligible one time expenses. I'm really concerned we're gonna open up a can of worms where all of a sudden we've got this extra money and we're adding stuff that's going to add expense down the road and we just can't afford.
Anymore?
Mr. President, could I have a division of assembly?
Which means?
Which means a voice, five girl call, vote.
Okay. I I just wanna make one comment. So we, some of us have have compared these two sets of jobs to other jobs. But these are the only two jobs that don't know if they're coming home at night. These are the only two jobs, especially the police department, that are getting ambushed across the country and not coming home. Uh, there's a young woman that got ambushed in Chicago and uh it's constant. You you can't not hear this. And so you could compare it like like I did with, you know, service workers or or QuickTrip or or retail, but it's not the same, not even close. And uh some way, somehow, and maybe this isn't the right way, maybe I'm wrong, but we have to be united and show support for these two agencies. Because that's, I'll tell you, none of this matters when we make that call. So I I am gonna say that and then division. Go ahead. But after division, I think we have to go with division, right? Or can we still talk?
You could still talk.
Yeah. I I I just wanna uh state that, um, you know, I I completely agree with you, uh, President Maloney here. I'm not against the funding to the E M P D and Safer. I just think we needed to wait until we get more clear directions from uh a clear uh guidelines from the Department of Treasury before voting on this. That's just why.
Yeah, and and I agree with that, but I also think that uh Nate Deanie's motion with the eligibility covers that.
And it's up to.
Up to Barb, yeah. Barb, you have something to?
Well, I guess before I could, I would have to amend it in has um one time eligible.
You make the motion to amend it.
I make the motion to amend the the sentence to the extent each agency has one timed eligible expenses.
I will second the amendment to the motion.
Now we vote on the amendment first?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, you Shane?
There is a. Oh, uh Director Chomsky?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So part of the interim final rules has revenue laws. Revenue laws can be used for operations. So yes, one time, but it can also be used for operations as long as 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 the league has, it's not gonna lower your levy for the future. So it's something that in the interim final rule, there is already language that would allow for the use of the funds for operations, which includes all.
Right, but I'm saying I was probably eligible. But I would, it would be a just a downward trend. That's just like when we took the money from Rothschild and put it in our budget. Now we gotta figure out how we can replace it. I mean, it's just, that's the only reason I'm saying one time eligible.
Okay. I agree.
So we're gonna vote on the amendment?
Yep.
Any more discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Now to uh.
The motion as amended.
A motion as amended? All those in favor say aye.
Uh, open.
Uh uh, uh, roll call. I'm sorry, roll call.
Herr Melling?
Hi.
Deanie?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Fainell?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scotty?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, moving to forty seven, exterior upgrades to the public safety building. So a- apparently this was in the works and uh um it, you know, so there was there a paint schedule or there was a budget, but was this because of me, my request, cause?
Well, no, I think there was a there's no recognition in the public uh public safety building remodeling project for
Exterior.
improvements to the exterior.
Okay.
Aesthetics, I guess as well. So I thought maybe aesthetics, some of them actually may be needed, I guess, for longevity as well as we as we find out here. But anyway, um one of those things, I guess, just uh remodeling project, perhaps we overlook things that that maybe should be more obvious. I don't know, let's point it out. Um, you know, we maybe we get used to look and we just kind of.
We do.
I mean, it's the background, we ignore it.
We do, you know, when people complain about, you know, visual pollution or or signs out on the highway and yet they can drive down Grand Avenue, any any road, Schofield Avenue, any road and see the pollution of telephone poles and wires everywhere. It looks like, my gosh, we're we're living on a shoestring. But I drive by here all the time. I was watching uh Sean's group out here. I was super impressed. I had one phone call, a guy telling me how long it was taking. I said, my God, are you kidding me? Look at the work they're doing out here. It's unbelievable. And I stop once in a while, talk to Jess, um and I've had several conversations with Keith. And then Scott kind of talked about how there's some poles going out there for some extra light. I think one in the back by the sheds, one up in the front. I think I saw those two bases and then I think one by the courthouse. And I think there's some wall wash going on the building, either up on top or somewhere, right, Michael?
Yeah.
And uh in in my mind, I had the colors in my head already. I I had it all ready and not even close. I'm super impressed by almost every one of these. And I I am the one that asked for the safer on the five doors. I also asked the safer board for the five doors of Red Mountain to do that too. I think we should have to take ownership um on their building and this building. There is nowhere that it says safer. Uh, you know, E M P D is very small, but I think it's gotta be bigger. I actually asked the chief uh that do you want a down plan so that, you know, it doesn't look like a police department name? He goes, absolutely not, you know? It's there's a lot of pride in in who works there in the building itself. But um I think these are are beautiful. Uh, I also asked when Lauren and I were at the last meeting uh for Safer is that on all the equipment, it says um South Area Fire District. And nowhere on on any of that equipment does it actually say safer. Nowhere on the building does it say safer. I think we might have a little emblem or something on the patch. And and yet at our board and at the commission, we complained that we get no media. How in the hell are they supposed to know it's safer? You know, it's it we don't even declare it. And you know what? All the things we talked about in communities and 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 how we all get along, we've got a two two perfect examples right here of how we get along. Yeah, and and we don't play it up. E M P D, I mean, that's pretty obvious, but the signage out there should tell our story. We're with two other communities. We have three communities working together for years, decades, right? It's it's been a long time, you know, and and now uh and it hasn't ever been run better, by the way. I tell Wally that all the time. Um, and then Safer, you know, as there's another one. We had a, we stubbed our toe and I was part of it. But I think right now I'm feeling really good about Safer. I I I I Lauren is doing a great job on there and I I think we're working out pretty well and getting somewhere, so.
Really turned the corner a lot.
It has, you know, and I I was thinking right here darker on the bottom and lighter on top. But I'm telling you, the models with the dark on top and a lighter on the bottom, not cream, because it's currently cream.
Right.
Uh, but but more of a a natural color, a stone color. Um, I I personally liked the first one, but I have no idea what this cost is.
That looks pretty expensive.
It does, and I I I know.
So if I could maybe.
Start off at number one right here.
Is it John Wallen camp or uh Lee Anderson out on the line, my chance?
Oh.
No, I don't think.
Okay, I know they are.
And you know, this can be just a seed and we can bring this up next month. But maybe you could all just think about it. You know, we don't have to decide tonight. But I I guess, you know, and that uh, you know, whatever, okay.
So just to go through these. Just to run through these to the order that we're looking at.
Yep.
So the first slide and it's numbered, it's uh slide two oh one in the packet. Is there a version of this with some architectural panels?
Page one ninety.
Um. What page?
On minus page one ninety.
Okay.
Yes.
But it's but it's number two oh one, yeah.
I downloaded it Sunday.
I've got two oh one.
But you appended it here, okay. So. All right, anyway, so the first the first picture you come to under this item on the agenda, whichever number it may be, is uh is the architectural panel version. This was the first one that they that uh Judy submitted to us. And uh they gave us a estimated ballpark range for this um I guess without lettering. So lettering in addition would be another, I guess, they figure around thirteen hundred left. Anyway, all for in a round number, a hundred thousand dollars to do this with lettering on the doors.
Lettering on the doors or not on the doors?
On the doors.
Okay. But right now it shows no lettering on the door. Right, okay. Right?
If I misinterpret this, Michael, you tell me.
No.
Okay.
I'd like to make a comment in there. Could you move back to person?
Yeah.
Please. He squared off the building pretty nicely. And that give him opportunity to write on it the name of the police department and also fire.
You know, that's a good point.
Now, if you look at the rest of them, the only thing he has done, he changed the uh the color, moved it up and down and keep the shape of the building as it is. I think this is more appealing to the eye. It look nicer. As we can write that safer on the doors, that's not the deal really. But I think for a hundred thousand dollars, you're practically getting building upgrade significantly.
So you're saying yes to that, to the first one or?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Sort of squared off look.
Yeah, it's squared off. It looked very nice and also give him opportunity.
To utilize the square, okay.
The rest of them, because of that curvature in the building, he hasn't done that.
Yeah, and then he changed the colors, you know, where the other ones are all the same color.
It moved the color up and down.
Right.
I don't know if you wanna look at those, but yeah, the other the other versions in here are just painting. I guess he gave only two.
Well, no, it looks the second is.
What's the difference cost wise?
The second one looks like it's got panels on top.
Um, painting probably fifty, you know, fifty five thousand dollars estimate.
But no, what's number, the second one below the squared off? Yeah, this one right here.
What?
How much is that one?
It's just paint.
Oh, that's that those are panels.
Yeah, but that's the thing. That's the panels that are on.
Oh my God, you're right. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, we have panels now. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, okay, brick is on the bottom.
And I guess just that.
My God, I'm sorry.
It's all right. I guess his thought on the color combination was that it kind of tied into the the colors that are gonna be on the new municipal facility.
That's right. Well, they're gonna be a natural, and I think three or four different colors.
Very earth tones.
It's gonna be very earth toned, very Frank Lloyd Wright looking, yeah.
Can I just ask, what's uh directed towards Chief Schultz? Is there one that you would prefer over the other?
I I I agree with a lot of what's being said. I think the first one, when I looked at it prior to the meeting, when I went through the packet, I was actually blown away and the the corners, squaring off the corners make it look a lot more professional. It is easier to put the names. I think just the way that rendering is done with the names, maybe you could pop the color a little bit, but it just looks very professional. Um, I really, really like it. Um, I do like the second, you know, and that's gonna be obviously more cost with the architectural panels. I like the color design on this one better than the flip flop with the tone. Um, since you ask, I'll offer my opinion on it. I I really like the idea of safer on the doors, even though it's not a fire department. I'm not a fire department guy. But I didn't, I didn't like the two, I don't, that the one where it's offset to the right, I don't like at all and that one doesn't look good.
Yeah, I think it cheapens it.
I, well, I.
Good at all. I like the concept very well, but when I see it, it, I think it really looks crap.
Going off of a a Greenville Fire Department that just got built three or four years ago that I drive by, it's an odd road to get through. But it's it's all glass, which is insane, but it's a lot of red accents because it's only fire, not uh he, you know, not police. But it it just, it's so striking. I can't believe the community actually paid for that. I, because it's, it just has to be incredible. Um, and my idea was to have red for the safer, you know, to declare fire. Um, but now that I saw that and and I think they actually said they liked the one that's off center.
Architect favors the off.
Yeah, well, because it it's not uh symmetrical and and I like I like one, three, five and sevens instead of odd numbers two, but um, but I now that I saw that and I saw the first one, see, I could see safer on that architectural squares. I could see safer all in red. And I could see E M P D all in blue and which would signify, those are very clear colors on what's happened.
I I like, I think the whole on the doors, I.
Yeah, oh, no, can't be on the doors, yeah. We we just have to tell our story. And you know, then that green, the green, yes, the green sign out there, you know, it's just.
It says Weston Fire Department.
It's still an old green colored sign and that would have to get changed or removed. I don't know why we even need it, to be honest with you.
Uh, does the meter split work on that? No.
Uh, well, that can be easily done and it's not on the sign, but you could easily put it down on that panel down by that entrance. So you know, thi- this can be just a second tonight. Let's let's just see everybody and just talk about it a little bit. But I'm I'm glad you got the two numbers. So painting the panels, so any kind of combination of that paint and then how long will that paint last? Cause you can see how long this paint lasted. You know, so fifty five grand for something you're gonna have to maintain. If that's a full paint job, we're gonna have to paint it again eventually, or I don't know how long the panels would last.
It would be painting, there will also be painting with with this with this option as well. It's just that you have these architect panel core.
Oh, okay, I see. You're right. Yep, you're right.
Still painting on the building.
Yeah, well, I'm getting a lot wrong here.
Well.
I just keep, I keep seeing those straight up and down panels as additions and it's not.
And if you've been out there, if you take a look at the metal panels, you can see where the paint has faded almost to the base coat.
Yep, you you can see actually the runners of the metal where where the sun is hitting it different.
That's only it's only been painted once since it's been there, occupied.
No, we're, I'm also trying, I'm also trying to get one of the chiefs, specifically Josh, to move into this building, you know? And I told him, once we're done, you can't, you're not invited anymore. We're gonna, we're gonna bring in somebody else, but you cannot move in here now because. So.
Can I just add one more thing?
Yeah.
I I do appreciate, I do like that one. I know it's gonna be up to you guys with the cost, but I I was, again, really impressed with that that makeup. And I I talked to Keith today and I I think I mentioned, I don't know if Sean was at the last meeting, but appreciate the attention that's been brought to the safety building. Uh, the landscaping is unbelievable, the amount of trees, on a staff time, um the attention to detail and how hard they worked in the heat. Um, we truly appreciate it and I think it really looks great. So, thank you.
You know, I and thank you for saying that. So they they work damn hard out there. They they took a lot of pride doing it out there. And and Sean, for you, um, several times I talked to Jess and she was telling me, I said, who ordered all this? And I think it was in the designer in from the architect. But then when it, once it got there, where they had it all placed, she didn't agree with, maybe you didn't either. But then being a horticulturist that she is, she moved it around and placed it in different spots where she thought uh, you know, it would it would grow better, it'd be placed better and it'd be maintained better where she did it. I I just liked it that she mentioned all that, that she did all that for that. And I thought that was pretty neat.
I talked to the staff out there a couple of times too and you could tell they were excited.
Yeah. Well, let me tell you, when when that municipal gets built, if we don't do something here, I mean, if you think it looks rough now, because that municipal building on Camp Oaks is gonna be absolutely stunning. It's gonna be gorgeous, so.
And even uh just looking at number uh number one, And even uh just looking at number uh number one, I I really like that one as well. And even if it does cost more, um, to allude to what you said, President Maloney about needing to tell our story. I uh I take an enormous amount of pride in our village and especially, um. And uh the top compliments I always get is uh how great our uh. Our fire EMS department and our police department, uh, our police department are. So let's, even though it's not very uh Midwestern, let's really um. Take some very obvious pride in what we do and in our municipality.
Good. Um, I don't know what your pleasure is, but I'm fine with just rolling this into the next month.
Okay.
Or is there some time, is there any time constraints?
Yeah, I think we're. I don't, I don't think it's time sensitive at all, unless, I guess, depending on how we were gonna propose. Delivering the project, if you will, because right now it's possible we would roll then or could be rolled into a change order. Under this year.
Oh, I see, I see, okay. Can we get Bradson on the change order? Well, uh, you know, I I know this is a little crazy, it might be a conflict of interest, but I'm only bringing up one example. But um from all the discussion on the new building on Highway twenty nine for LPGA.
Mm-hmm.
I I was pleasantly surprised and pleased with how that came out, when, and I didn't think it was gonna come out like that, so. I I know there's been some issues out there and even ongoing issues, but I I just was, and I just, so. Is this the architect from Kenny saying that this is the pricing of the panels? I I don't know, is there somebody else local that may have better pricing on panels? I have no idea.
Well, we take, there has been a, there wasn't a quote or an estimate on.
Okay.
Painting, all but the north side of the building under the uh public safety building remodel project that never came to fruition. That was like for, I think, twenty five thousand.
I thought I heard twenty seven thousand, yeah.
And then another fifteen thousand, and that, that still probably has to be part of what we have to evaluate here. Interior of the garage, I believe, is another painting.
An E and P garage or safer?
Inside there.
Safer or?
Inside, I think it's inside, I think it's inside the garage where now the, yeah.
Your parking garage too.
Exterior, bolt, used to be the Sally Port, I guess, or whatever you called that. Um, it's now under, which I think is now under a roof. And there was some, there's some recommendation painted, am I correct on that?
East side?
Yeah.
East side, yeah.
You probably didn't think it was the only side.
Cover parking was before.
Yeah, where the squad parking is now, um, they they only painted the areas that were, you know, where walls were cut out or, you know, new doors were. Put in, so what thought was to try to give, give that whole interior area, you know, so it all looks the same, so there's not.
Yeah.
Or a different shape.
Jennifer, we were reading that walkthrough and you said this must be an industrial look.
Well, I I thought you. I'm very so happy for having indoor parking, I don't think anybody cares what it looks like, so.
So I, we just have to do some finish what.
Okay, well, so I think we we wanna get, you know, a a good list of what needs to be added to what was, what's been done yet. Plus, we also need to go through a punch list. Sounds like there's some things that.
Okay.
That uh still maybe need to be addressed through the architect and the contract. And maybe some things that were done beforehand by us that aren't part of the contract, we gotta sort those out right now.
What's your purpose, what's, what do you think? I'm sorry, Husheng.
You know, we're talking about painting, I just added the number, this kid was telling me that number. He come over and said, do you wanna take about fifty thousand dollars? But you're gonna paint it again.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
And I would say the life expectancy of that could be between five to ten years. So if five to ten years, we're gonna spend fifty thousand dollars. This what is done here is almost maintenance free. If you look at that, in in the south side or 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 even the. Uh, west side of it, I'm not seeing the backside what he has done, but it's almost maintenance free. And the money we're gonna spend on the painting, we're gonna get it back by going with us and spending that hundred thousand dollars upfront and be done with.
Thank you. And this is uh photo one, you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
That's what you said there. We may negotiate with him with the writing because it's hard to read it. The architect has a tendency to kind of a downplay the writing on the building.
And play up the building.
Right, right.
Okay.
Jennifer, will there be any supplemental requirements on this? I presume there would be something. Okay.
Add it to the file.
Yeah. Okay, what, uh, you wanna board this tonight or you wanna just throw it to next month?
Well, I I.
Is there a little bit more work to do?
Yeah, I I I still wanna get some pricing in, what to, I agree.
Okay, I agree, I agree. If if it's not time sensitive, Michael?
I guess just pricing wise, we're probably either, like Keith said, try to negotiate a change order or just. Put this back out for bid, so you know, right now the estimate is the estimate from the architect, so. Tell we, you know, get a firm bid price, so.
I I think that'd be wise.
Yeah.
So, um, not knowing exactly how to proceed here, Lauren.
Well, uh, we could, they could, we can make a recommendation, don't have to make a motion, but uh, the discussions that's happened here, I think we've talked about different colors of the lettering. I I'm sure it's an architecture rendering and you can change colors on those pretty easy, at least I think they can.
Yeah.
And that's, the only thing I see is is the the lettering.
Right, right.
Right, and I like your idea with the red and the.
Yep.
On these letters, not on the door.
Right, I agree. Oh, no, no, not on the doors. Yeah, I like it a lot. Okay, what, laughing at me?
I'm laughing at that part, oh.
You're laughing with Mark, sure, yeah, okay, alright. Okay.
Very diplomatic.
So we, so we don't have to act on this, we could just wait until the next meeting, is that right?
Yeah, yep, let's let's roll this into next month, and yes.
Yeah, I think what what I'm hearing though is we should look into what all the changes would be or all the additional.
Yes, yes.
We catch them all at once instead of. Additional work would be needed and how best to bring that to completion.
And then, I I would like what Michael to identify the wall pack lighting. I'd like to know where that actually is. I know where the free poles are, but I I I can't.
So if you drive out there at night, um, I think it last week Scott actually changed out or even added. So I mean, I think it's right here between the window and the door, and then along these doors are all brand new lights.
Okay.
Then he's also working on, I think it's a light right in here. And I think maybe one on the corner. And.
To illuminate the building or?
Yeah, so they're wall packed.
What about right here at this curving? Because you're gonna have one at the courthouse, one in the back by the shed, and then one up in front.
Yeah, I think there's.
Those are the three cement cylinders I see.
Pillars.
Pillars. I don't, I don't see nothing right here.
Yeah, I'd have to look at the lighting plan quick.
I just, you're you're basically illuminating the building, not washing out.
It it'll come down the building and then out.
Okay.
For certain.
Okay.
I think we need to have a light to illuminate the sign up.
Oh, definitely, definitely.
Yeah.
Upwash, yep. Mr. Sam?
I agree.
Or just internally light it.
Shane?
Oh, that's two years, upwash lights.
This is just the rendering.
Right, right, right.
The architect has to do all the. Safety mission, archerizing to do his work, then we can get a better price tag.
Yes, and then I think staff's gonna do a little bit more too, okay.
I think that way it's priced be more sensible, we understand it better. This is the I got hundred thousand, uh, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm fine with that. Do we need a motion, Brad?
I'll make a motion, I'll move to archerize architect to do the design. And give us that detailed cost estimate on the project.
Okay, second, motion by Zagami, second by Feeny, any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, so carried. New business levy limit presentation and budget discussion.
Yes, um, in the packet I just showed, um, a levy limit worksheet, so I chose, um. The two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty one and two thousand twenty two. And it's just supposed to show, I always talk about the debt service exemption, we have wiggle room. And those, the orange line, and then if you go down with the blue arrow to debt service levy. The difference between those two numbers is the wiggle room I always talk about. And in twenty twenty, the wiggle room was a hundred and eleven thousand. So of that hundred and eleven thousand, we get to decide how much of that we want to use for next year. Um, with our not so good number of net new construction of point eight two. Uh, the levy limit per Wisconsin State statute was forty two thousand. So without that little wiggle room that I keep talking about, we could increase our levy forty. Other than that, so obviously we're not limited this year, we have one wiggle room, but um if you move on to the twenty twenty two. If assuming we use up all the wiggle room, and if we have a one percent. Increase in our net new construction, we can increase our revenue by fifty two thousand. So.
Unless we borrow more money.
So unless we borrow more money, yes. Because once the orange line of the debt service exemption equals what we need for our debt service fund to pay debt, um, there's no more wiggle room. So, um, budget is starting, hopefully this year will be, it shouldn't be too bad. We saw the safer numbers already, they were very positive, we're gonna be working on Josh and Matt kind of finalizing those. We got some meetings set up to just verify the numbers and walkthroughs. For others metro in Village, we're just starting. You know, John looked at Metro today, and I started Village wages, so. We're still getting at it, we're gonna be setting up a doodle call. We kind of looking to get, we're gonna have a joint meetings like we did for the last few years between the Board of Finance, so everyone's on the same page. We're planning on bringing, um, the general fund to the special revenue in utilities, maybe in three separate meetings. Um, we'll see how many meetings, um, we expect to publish the budget on October thirty first. So hopefully we can adopt on November fifteenth, which is the third Monday in November. If that does not happen, we still have the fourth Monday in November, but that is Thanksgiving week, which we try to avoid, so.
Okay.
Any questions? Any changes that we wanna see in the budget process this year?
Oh, one, one thing that I'd just like to throw out there is, uh. Maybe, uh, with utility bills or with, um, publishing of a proposed preliminary budget. Uh, we set aside a special meeting and have, uh, and it, uh, open it to. The citizenry, where they come in and, uh, talk about maybe things we're missing, things we want or things that they wants to see. Because we're their representatives, we don't give them, uh, we don't give them necessarily the freedom to go in there and say staff's going to be making a dollar. Uh, each this year, but we have, um. But invite them to be, or to take some more ownership in village governance. And, uh, and allow them to bring their perspectives to the table in one designated meeting. I realize I'm a little bit of an idealist, but.
I'd love to, I I think in the past the administrators have tried to reach out to public and get more involvement. But I think it's gonna really come down to the point where, okay, we're gonna hold a referendum to increase the levy and then. Hopefully it will get people coming here wanting to talk about it. I mean, when things are going good and. Uh, so we haven't raised the levy that significantly in the past, we we really haven't heard anything. Which unfortunately I wish the state would pay attention to. But as the state representatives say, if they don't say anything when you put it to referendum, they'll vote yes, right? So. Other than that, we plan on providing a lot of statistics. What we wanna show you is what a lot of communities our size are getting for share revenue. What low levy is for communities our size and basically showing you why they can afford all this stuff and. We're not like them and how we can be vested, we're gonna have to be different from those other communities and whether it's. Rethinking of how we do some things, or if we are, want to be closer to theirs, because that's what we need to be, is asking the public for more money. It's not ideal time, I mean, I talk to Keith all the time, this is just, we're coming to a head with. Or we need to ask the public for money, but we're building a new building, and then we have to explain how we can build a new building, but not have money for operations. I think that's gonna be our biggest challenge as a group here. But it's, there could be changes in the state yet. I mean, that's what we're always looking for. We get another pot of money here, how can we increase our total revenue without increasing levy? It'll be an interesting couple of years and hopefully the state will end up being more nice place.
Okay. Alright, moving on. Forty nine, change address of the new municipal center site location, lo- located on Camp Phillips Road, uh, Jen?
Move to approve.
Oh, move to approve, I'll second that. Second by Manel, uh, motion by Zagami, second by Manel, anything on discussion?
Um, I may have left the meeting before you, when you guys started talking, well, we'll, um, changing the address to forty seven forty seven, was, what's the rationale behind it?
Um, easier, uh, easier remember. Um, I think it was forty two oh seven?
It's forty seven oh seven.
Forty seven oh seven, and I I asked for double oh seven, and Jen couldn't get it set. And and then, uh, so it it just for me, I just repeated forty seven forty seven and I said, is it doable? And she said, yes. I just thought it's very easy to remember, that's all. Uh, then Husheng actually said like forty seven hundred or forty six hundred and we couldn't get it.
That's the way the universal of the government buildings used to be always even numbered.
Right, right.
Right.
With zeros, it's the school.
Well, it's on the odd side of the street, there's.
Yeah, it's, and 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 that's what she said, it's on the odd side, so we'd have to play with one, threes, fives, sevens. But you're right, it's the zero zeros are on all the, uh, it weren't identities or school moves, yep.
So just, uh, I I just wanna be sure that probably this won't affect any public safety or anything, you know, is that correct, then, okay?
Just wanna be sure. She, Jen actually checked and there's a range of numbers we could select, and and that's why, you know, Husheng threw one out. I just, I just said out loud, I just repeated forty seven twice and I just thought, wow, that's a really easy number to remember. And I I I don't know if I wanna bring this up, but I I did Google it, forty seven forty seven, and it came on something with angels. It was a really good meeting, and and it said something about, and then Keith said, that's it, forty seven forty seven. I swear to god he did. He just, oh, he got real animated, put his hand up, it's, that's it.
Wait, forty seven forty seven?
Keith got in, was it? Yes, I know. It shocked me, yeah. Jen actually bent, put her seat a little bit.
Oh, for that reason alone.
Yeah, I know. So really, it's, we had a range to pick from and and, but but I actually thought what Husheng said first was right.
It is an angel number.
Yeah, it's, it, what is it, there's more than.
An angel number from a celestial king.
Yeah, it's, it was all good stuff and Keith right away just boom, you know.
Building your foundation on honesty and goes further to.
Yeah, I I I thought I heard a beer open too, so interesting.
Oh my god.
Uh, so forty nine, so we have a motion and a second, uh, on the discussion, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Fifty, engineering services, change order number two for the Crestwood Acres reconstruction project.
Uh, Mr. President, I will be excusing myself for the duration of debate and vote due to conflict of interest.
Okay. What's your pleasure?
I move to approve the change, uh, the change.
Uh, motion by Zhong?
Second.
Second by Zagami.
Discussion.
Discussion, please.
Michael, if, why couldn't we wait until they exhaust the budget, then we give them a change order?
They're likely going to exhaust this by the time they send us their next, uh, pay request, I guess.
That's exactly where I was going.
Yep.
They're gonna use that money plus this, if we wait and we see where they are, but you see, they're gonna use all the money by next meeting, next month.
They'd probably be close, I mean, you know, some engineering firms are. I'd say a little more loose, they kinda, you know, they're they're okay with donating a little time. Um, ACOM's got a little stricter, um, I guess corporate policies where they don't, you know.
That's fine, we don't mind donation from them, that's not what I'm asking, it's.
Yes. Yeah, no.
But, uh, I wanna make sure, if we're gonna, we're gonna give him this change order, we need to install it up, because that's what he said in his vendor.
Well, so so they're, they're anticipating that they may need it, um, with the additional crews coming on. But if they don't, you know, they don't automatically get the sixty eight thousand, you know, they may only spend fifty thousand of it.
Okay.
So.
So how come this wasn't included in the original bid?
Because the, uh, original project, when we asked for the proposals, I mean, I I had eighteen weeks or nine hundred hours of construction. Just so all the proposals we got back were, you know, um.
Apples to apples.
Apples to apples. So now that we have, you know, that that was last August in twenty twenty when we were ordering the design contract. So now that as construction has progressed, um, you know, the contractor has given us a schedule. You know, it looks like it's probably more of a twenty four week process than an eighteen week process.
So they knew back then that they, that it wasn't gonna be fulfilled, or?
I mean, I. I mean, I.
It was used up, or how does, I'm, what I'm, let's see, how did they?
So so what, I I mean, even in May, they're like, you know, it looks like the contractor's schedule is going long or, you know. They weren't real comfortable with it, I told them, let's, let's give it a month or two and see what kind of progress the contractor is making before we. Uh jump into it and ask for, you know, additional hours on the contract.
Has there been any design changes or anything else here that?
Uh we had the one design change on Douglas where we did um.
I thought we gave them a change order, yeah.
And we gave them a change order for this, that was a separate four thousand dollar change order or thirty nine hundred for the the design.
But this wasn't the one that had the additional, I guess, I I remember sitting in the audience where there was discussions regarding some uh piping that was missed in the bidding process.
No, that wasn't, that was the cha- change order that went to the contractor. And this change order that go to the engineer.
But the engineer that that we hired didn't catch that that was missed.
So so that was a, well.
He, the the only reason I agree with that was, if he was adding that to the project, we had to do, we had to pay for it.
Right.
Now, he he forgot it, it's to be added to the project and we pay for it, however, we pay more than what actually you should pay for.
Right, I think Mumford mentioned it was three times what he would have expected.
Change order is usually higher and we pay premium price for it, and that was a main discussion. That was a main dis- disagreement, at least among us sitting in here, we talk about it, as a matter of fact, uh I forgot his name now.
Right. Tom Hummer.
He had, Tom had the number.
So.
He showed me, he said, this is what it's gonna cost actually.
Right.
Five.
But if I just could interject, I know Michael probably has better detail, I think his, the number he was referring to. Wasn't necessarily valid for the project that we're working on here, can you clarify that, Michael?
And even if you look at um, you know, the cost of piping right now in today's economy versus what it was. Last year, you know, even six months ago, pipe prices have gone up fairly significantly, uh almost two fold, so. I know that was, that was kind of a shocker, and then when we did the Apache project, you know, we got the prices for that, um the curb stops, the you know laterals. You know, it was pretty much in range of what the current bid price, bid market is, so. It's.
I I'm just saying, I I'm just questioning it because it seems that that should have been something that was caught and they didn't, and now they, now we're short on hours and. They knew that when they started the project and.
Well.
It seems like we're we're being forced, we're, you know, having to force feed them or, you know, whatever, I'm just saying, just keep.
I guess, when it comes to the construction oversight or whatever, whatever, how over tournament. These are normally structured as a time of material type uh compensation, because you're kind of at the mercy of. Things like the contractor's efficiency and things like that, as Michael said though too, when he was comparing proposals. He just, he directed them how many weeks to include in the contract and as he explained. It's taking more time than what he had budgeted uh from his, from the initial pre-planning efforts, uh so I don't. I don't know how much um, you you're saying that was about six weeks short based on what you just told, what you just said?
Eighteen to twenty four.
Yeah, that's practical.
You may unmeasure that, or look at, uh ask the contractor to give us the schedule. Then I'll take the engineer's budget for inspection and compare it with the number of the least contractor could work. They should come close to each other, engineer, he's gonna do a little bit extra work, because you gotta do the punch this, you gotta.
Right.
Look at the contractor to make sure it's clean up, you gotta do the asphalt, you gotta do, those are all part of it, but. That's a good measure to see if the contractor gonna work ten weeks, he has to work ten weeks and that's what we are paying for. In here, what I'm saying is, if he's gonna have two crew out there, then this money coming, yes. But the contractor is not sure yet. Am I correct?
Yeah, right now.
Or or sure he's gonna have two crew.
They have, so they have the one crew out there doing concrete work while the other crew is installing pipe right now, um you know, so if they have another one come in. You know, he, the onsite inspector right now is handling those two crews at the same time, you know, he's checking the form work before the pour. And then keeping an eye on the other uh staff, but if they do, essentially bring in a third crew, then, you know, he, kinda like I can't be in three places at once.
No, he can be in two places, I agree, he goes to the concrete crew, he missed all the piping, he's at the pipe, he missed the concrete, so.
Yep.
It doesn't work. Anyhow.
Good. Trustee Williams, a question. Go ahead, Lauren.
Just the observation, it it seems this, this year, a lot of our capital projects that we have have been underestimated, would you say some of them have been?
The, yeah, there's, there's, there's a hit in the market with uh.
I I understand that, I agree, but do you think this lends you to the point in your bidding for the, or budgeting for these things, you may have to be a little more. Um.
Aggressive.
Aggressive in how much it's gonna cost?
Yeah. Correct, yeah, I mean, we'll be updating all the estimates for future projects.
I know, uh, trustee Zhang is always, uh.
Right.
A good thing, is always hyping on um all for bids and is this correct and the the current data that's used, and I know you do it. I think this should point to, that we need to be more diligent in what these things are gonna.
Both are points, if it is over budgeted, can we get it back if it comes under? Yes.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Correct.
Especially on equipment and stuff, okay.
Can you bet on that?
Well, not all of you, no, I I I agree, I agree.
I agree, I agree with you.
They have to prove it.
Yeah, yeah.
Mike has to prove it.
Yep, yeah.
Everything come to him, he has to prove it, and usually on those, you got the foreman and you got inspector, both of us to sign off on those. All the pay requests and everything coming through, so, there's enough check and balance.
Okay. Um do we have a a motion, a second?
Yes.
We are on the question.
On the question, um any more discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, Nate? Uh number fifty one, sanitary sewer manhole lining project.
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve by Zagami.
Second.
Second by Feeny, on the discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, number fifty two, purchase of power valve exerciser.
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve by Zagami.
Second.
Second by Feeny, anything on the discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, fifty three, assessor reevaluation contract, revaluation contract, motion by Ermling.
Second.
Second by Manel, on the discussion.
Another question, could you just clarify that that is per um finance committee?
Yes, foundation nation, yeah.
Recommendation, cause there were some additions in the contract that were recommended by attorney, that are current assessor contract.
Okay, I um, as a finance committee, uh anything on the discussion, hearing none, uh all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, fifty four, interim financing for municipal center bank note.
Move to approve the ten year note from Intercity Bank for the rate of zero point eight nine percent per recommendation of finance.
Cause in ten years, was it?
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Is it ten years?
Uh, it was, I believe it was.
One and a half.
Year and a half.
Oh, year and a half.
Year and a half, yeah.
Year and a half.
Question, and what rate?
It was uh zero point eight nine percent.
Oh, zero, I I thought you said one, okay, yeah, it's point eight nine, right?
People's bank was one.
And that too was, uh, yeah, the, um.
That was a high. Finance, finance committee, yeah, per finance, okay, so motion by Ermling. Uh, second by White, or just the other way around, I'm sorry, uh motion by White, second by Ermling.
White. Do thanks.
Anything else on the discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, uh fifty five, Village of Weston districting plan, uh trustee Feeny.
Uh yes, the, so, when uh or every ten years, we have the census and. Um, and we have, or the state legislature draws up state legislative seats and congressional districts. Uh in order to uh, in order to uh show population flow and represent and hopefully have. Uh communities better in, better represented by legislative districts controlling for population, so. Uh I, uh I think that right now at, well, just under sixteen thousand people per the latest census information. I think that in order to um better reflect uh neighborhood needs. And uh village, village growth, we should divide the village into three. Uh three districts uh represented by two trustees, the village president was, would still be elected at large. And then every year, the, so twenty twenty two, the even person. Or the even trustee would be up for uh election, and then in odd years, the odd trustee in that district would be up for election. Um, I think that it would promote uh more competitive local elections, I think that it would promote uh more. Uh more transparency and accountability, and I think it would do a better job of getting some of these neighborhood. Uh neighborhood concerns such as the roads in Crestwood Acres or last week or last month, uh trustee Ermling with. Uh when uh with the ATB uh issues uh going down or in your neighborhood. Uh one citizen called me and let me know he was very strong, very strong against that. So I think that by uh by dividing it up into three districts with two trustees each, we'd have a better. Uh, a better um. Uh idea of what the, of what the villages, the concerns of those areas of the village. And then the guidelines uh that I came up with is um that we would accept. Or reject the plan as a whole as presented by staff, uh and. That we then, that the board would not be able to edit and approve the plan in the same meeting because. That's uh because the public would not have the opportunity to weigh in on any edits or changes. Also, uh to the greatest extent possible, uh hold neighborhoods and wards together, uh what do you mean by wards? So the Village of Weston has thirteen wards, okay, got it, okay, got it, alright, go ahead. And then uh, uh and then if we have to divide, let's say. Uh Ward two, like one, like one half of one neighborhood has to be in District one and the rest has to be in District two. Then we cut as little of that away as possible, preserving as much of the neighborhood together as possible. Uh and then, uh we, and then no districts may be drawn to benefit incumbents. Because that's not fair to the voters, that would be us, the board of trustees, picking our voters rather than the voters uh picking us. Uh and uh I'll open it up to any questions.
I think you understand the last part, are you gonna pick up the order or Ward has to pick us up?
Uh.
They're gonna vote for us, they're not voting for them.
Right, but that, that's why I'm, uh so one of the big things in the news is gerrymandering. So if, you know, I say, hey, people in, in uh Ward two really like me, I'm going to. Propose an edits uh of, of the plan in one meeting so that we vote, so that we can. Uh approve it at once and uh and preserve my own reelection, I don't think that's right, so that's, that's what I mean when I say the voters.
So to eliminate gerrymandering, you would not have this at all. Because you you could, whoever's gonna draw this up, I mean, however people are gonna move around, you could have, like Barb is a, is a powerful. Get vote getter, okay?
Yeah.
Now, her being out there in whatever you wanna call her, one district. A person that's, you know, going up against her, you know, may may say no, but they have no chance to go in, you know, so when you're getting elected at large.
Yeah.
It's the top three voters.
Right.
And so this is not gonna be that way, now, now all of a sudden, you're gonna actually have some people restricted. Um, you know, it's, it will be easier to campaign, you can, if you're gonna, if you're someone that goes door to door, you only have to do a third, you won't have to do the whole, the whole village. But why wouldn't it be just popular vote, I totally understand president.
Mm-hmm.
But in a small village like this, I mean, I don't do it.
What's, what problem, or what?
What's, what's the opposite?
What brought this up here, what, what, what problem are you trying to solve?
Yeah.
So I just think that it's time for a better system, and this is not a crazy unprecedented idea, even over has. A similar model where they have uh their trustees elected by a pair of wards, so.
So I'm confusing to me, I guess, I don't know, I'm.
Sorry, I mean, so, you know, for forever, it's been open elections and so you're actually advocating.
Yeah.
Possibly that the top three or or in the, in a president year, that the top four, you know, the top three vote getters may not be the top three.
What I'm saying is.
You could have the top two in Barb's ward or my ward or Steve's or anybody else's ward, and yet that second one will get beat out by one. And then the other two wards get somebody in, so what I'm saying is that while the current system.
Has served us well for many years, because of our size and because we're expected to continue to grow. A new system would be better, so what I'm saying is, uh under my proposed system. Uh those three districts would be drawn to population about as equal as possible by who, by staff. Because uh, because they see the information, they can draw it as close as possible, there is transparency, uh if anyone.
What would you use to to gather the information, the census that occurs every ten years?
Yep. Yep. It's the same.
I think population substantially continues to increase, I mean, the ten years doesn't seem to be relative.
I'm sorry, Barb?
Yeah, I guess, I I'm, I'm not sure, I, like you said, the system has worked well. I mean, I can remember when I was the county board, I'd get calls from people out in a whole different area, out in Edgar, because they liked. That I listened and whatever, I have, was not in their district anywhere near it. The thing is that. What you're gonna create is now, say for example. My district has gotten, with the county, had gotten changed around a lot because of the population that changed.
Mm-hmm.
But how many county board members have to be appointed because nobody runs in that district? And if you get, um. I I just, I just think you're gonna have more appointed people than what you're gonna have elected people.
Well, that's why I divided it into three and not six, because.
Yes, but then you'll have two in each of these things and you only get one candidate. For that district or that board or whatever you call it, so then after the election, then the board has to elect. A point, another people, you hear it all the time on the county level, where there'll be an election. And I don't know how many seats sometimes, won't even have a candidate. I just think you're, um, the village, um, I get people from all over the neighborhoods. It's not just my neighbor, although they get at me a little closer because they see me on the street and they stop me, but um. I I I I don't, at this point, if we're starting to be in a great big.
I I think one of your points was that you would uh be more available to your district. Uh and and you would work more with your district, I mean, so to Barb's point, I I would not say you gotta call this, you know, of order or Hushang. I know, but you, it could be, you don't know who's gonna get elected, so you you could get some people elected here that says, not my district, call somebody over here, I don't even have to worry about you. Cause you're in a different district, you know, cause I have to worry about you only if you move into my district. And I, to Steve's point, is what problem do we have now that we're trying to solve? I don't see it, now you, you said it's new and it's better, just cause it's new does not automatically mean it's better, we're not actually letting the voters pick. The most popular or the most vote getters, whatever you wanna say it, the hardest working uh people that get out there. You're not, you're actually guarding some people in these districts is what you would be doing.
So Mister President, uh I I did reach out to the league of municipalities, just to kind of get their insight on it, um.
Yeah.
Uh you know, I I'm not exactly sure where I stand on this at this moment here, uh I I still, they did recommend it that I reach out to some of the. Uh villages that are, that does echo this and some of them, they recommend it were like Menominee Falls or, you know, some other, and they, I know that Jerry from the uh lead did mention that. Um most villages in Wisconsin use the at-large model, but on the other hand, most villages are small, you know, so he did bring that up as well too, so. Um as I said here, I I'm not exactly sure where I stand at the moment, I would recommend if the board. I would recommend if the boards are right with this to give us a little bit more time just to um time to like think about this and for me to do my homework a little bit more as well. That's just my thoughts.
Okay, then the.
I have a motion to defer or postpone.
I I will make a motion to defer this to the next, to the what?
Uh, the September meeting.
Why are we doing that again?
But I think you might have a timing issue, which I do.
Exactly.
Yes.
We do have a timing issue.
What did attach that?
What, why are we differing though? What I I.
I I I, like I said here, I'm not exactly sure where I stand. I just wanna reach out to the municipality to just listen.
Oh, okay, okay, just for more information, okay.
Uh, but as uh Clerk Wankoff said, we do have a timing issue because of the uh because of Marathon County doing its own redistricting. And they uh they start uh September first.
And why why would that be an issue with them doing that? I thought staff would be doing ours.
I think because you'd want the boundaries of the uh.
Oh, okay.
Supervisory district of the county to be within a ward.
Right, that's the other thing.
With wards for county districts.
Our our population thresholds for wards in a village under statute as well. But I think for us, the mac, the minimum is six hundred and maximum, I was just looking at this.
It's it's right on there at the bottom.
Oh, right.
I guess the at-large has been working. Am I able to make a motion to deny this?
There's already a motion.
There isn't.
Who made the second to defer? Who made the second to defer? Anybody?
I made the motion.
No, he made the motion. Who made the second to defer? Anybody?
It has been seconded.
Okay.
I thought it was.
Let's just finish that part then.
Well, no, if I make a motion to to deny, we can just move on then.
But there's a motion to um defer currently that's.
Well, let's, I'll ask it three times. I asked it once, uh motion second for these first? Is there a second for these first? Right, it dies for lack of a second? I'll entertain another motion.
I'll make a motion to deny um changing using the, I guess you made reference to at-large is what we're, is is how it's referred to right now.
At at large is what we currently having.
Right. So I would make the motion to continue to to follow that proceed, our both procedures.
Uh, motion by Manel. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ermeling? Anymore in the discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Nay? E, where did you vote?
I said aye.
Aye, okay. So it's um it's uh denied. Uh, six to one, uh fifty-six. Wausau Cent, Wausau Central Wisconsin Convention and Visitor Search Contribution for recruitment of Executive Director. This, is this one or is this your?
Well, either one.
Okay, go ahead.
To take it, I guess there's uh, I guess it's out on in the staff report, um there's the ongoing search through the Convention and Visitor Bureau for an Executive Director. We've been meeting periodically with uh Galen Roden of uh Rim Mountain and uh Katie Rosenberg of uh Wausau mayor. Um, just in terms of getting our contract with the C V B updated. They're both round, but but uh intentions, we can get a contract put together and Rim Mountain and Wausau both pledged to uh to contribute some funds for the Executive Director recruitment. So uh we had discussed the uh, I guess, just a follow suit and uh and 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 mirror their contribution with some contribution of our own. Wausau has pledged up to five thousand dollars for the search. Uh Rim Mountain has acted on uh a amount of two thousand dollars, I guess. So I guess would recommend the board consider a contribution. And I know we thought that perhaps um matching what Wausau had pledged would be appropriate.
That come from.
I I have a question. Doesn't the C V B have enough money to do this themselves?
Uh, they're they're actually not the ones searching out their own director.
Okay.
So they actually have a committee formed. Uh Galen Roden is on there. I believe there's somebody on there from Lisa Rasmussen is on there from Wausau. Uh, I think there's five people total. I I think the the big direction was to kind of not have C V B people on there.
Okay.
I I'm pretty sure you're aware of that too. These are are person on there.
Thanks for that answer.
And um and then we we have talked about five thousand dollars as a a commitment. It's gonna, it might cost more, but they'll try to figure out where that's gonna come from. Go ahead.
Okay.
And Hushain, okay.
I do wanna inform the board that there will be, did interview three candidates today. Uh there were six total, but then they interviewed three and I would be very frank with the board that they they did get an offer to a one of the individual who was extremely qualified. I will, I will just be very frank with the board here. Uh, very uh very knowledgeable, very uh very far of um, very very depth knowledgeable. So I will put that as.
God, I I'm so glad you said that.
Which brings up a point because if they don't need the money, do we get it back?
Well, that that is the point because we're gonna see what is expended. A Galen Roden is part of this and then as we see this not to exceed, then we would do our portion. So if it's uh ten thousand dollars and Rim Mountain does two and weeks before or whatever, you know, so.
Also, would this come from our tax, uh group tax dollars?
Yes.
We we, yes, we believe so.
Okay.
Now, I don't know who he's talking about. Maybe we didn't need the search committee like we thought. I mean, hasn't been really, I missed the last couple of years.
The search committee was involved.
It was involved, yep.
They did.
So, I mean, and this was something that wasn't regional, this was something that really expanded out. We were going into different states, trying to find the right candidate.
They did reach out to A D R, um, the who the uh the Employment Services and that was the Employment Services, the Management Services were headhunter that reached out. And um as I said here, they had the 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 individual that um we interviewed was extremely, I was very blown away.
Really? You were part of it too?
I I was, the board interviewed it today, so they interviewed them today. So I was very, very um pleased with the individual.
So so this actually went through the search committee already and now it went to the board?
Correct.
Oh, so it's two, okay.
Correct.
I I think Keith has a meeting on tomorrow, on Tuesday. Jessica, you're kind of part of that group too, aren't you? No? Keith, you have one tomorrow? Isn't it always on Tuesdays?
No, they didn't actually schedule.
Not yet. Why don't you, you wanna reach out to Galen and and make, Eric Rosenberg?
Sure.
Maybe, okay. I'll be on the road if you want me on.
Yes, yeah. Galen and Al were part of the meeting as well today.
Oh.
Uh, they echoed my same remarks as well too, so I do wanna put that out there as well.
Thank you. I did not hear that, so thank you. Well, it's your pleasure.
Mr. Monroe?
Yes, I'm sorry.
City of Wausau contributed five thousand. Their population is about eighty-eight thousand. So we have about fifteen thousand even less than that, maybe our contribution should be proportional, proportional to our population. And maybe twenty-five hundred? Unless you think is that enough or?
I um, I I spoke, I told, I told, you know, in a, in a, it's obviously we need this approval here, but I did say uh with Keith and Katie and uh uh Galen on the phone that we would contribute the same as Wausau. We've been kind of following Wausau's lead through this whole deal. Um, we're kind of taking more of what Mayor Rosenberg is doing versus any other community because I think they share the same problems or the same concerns we did. And uh so if if that's not voted that way, then that's the way it is.
Probably, that's what she told.
Well, I know, but I I don't have the authority.
Yeah, but when you speak it, you're representing us.
Yeah, I know, yeah, but I I said, I said I had to get approval, so.
Yeah, but you're representing us, so.
I I can wiggle my way out of that.
I know.
So. It'd be fun to watch, it'd be fun to watch, Lauren?
No, I'll take it.
In in the suggestive language, it talks about contingent upon the execution of a contract before the year end of twenty twenty-one. I think that's fairly important for us to get that settled.
Yeah.
So I would think whoever.
It's 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 been a nail-biter right now. Last couple of months, we we feel like it hasn't gone anywhere and then past people, Brian Schultz kept kind of coming in with stuff and asking for donations and it 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 just got a little, for me, a little weird on some of this. But Galen assured us that it was going down the right path with the selection committee and Katie didn't seem too worried because I think she had more uh issues than than maybe we did.
The main frustration right now is that after all this back and forth on a contract with Wausau, now they now they decided to have an attorney look at the contract.
Right, please. No, no, not Wausau, the C V B.
Well.
The C V B has an attorney not looking at this.
I also believe the city of Wausau is gonna be voting on theirs on the twenty-first of this month.
Oh, good.
It was time sometime this month.
So is that, I wasn't of the understanding if they had any feedback yet on what changes the C V B's attorney might be recommending on the contract, but.
Yeah, I I'm not exactly sure. I I'm not exactly sure too. All I recall, if I recall correctly, they just mentioned that the city of Wausau is voting on theirs this month.
Okay. I I just, you know, as we talk and different things, um, I've always been just real concerned that if we do anything as we used to do it, I don't want that to go away from our our termination of the contract and all of a sudden put us back in the contract. And Keith or Jessica, somebody's been talking to uh Attorney Eady to get some advice here too and he's been looking over everything for us too, so.
Yeah, his recommendation actually is to let C V B and city of Wausau iron out this contract in detail right now, this contract language and then then we'll just make sure what's in there.
And then we'd wait to see the finished product and then go from there, so. Uh George Peterson did say at the Mung Association, uh the festival, that he thought that Weston should jump in with him, with Rosschild and me, so, yeah, I'm I'm sure he mentioned that.
He was talking about, yeah, when we were dropped off in the woods.
Yep, yeah, yeah.
The woods.
He did. My sister still laughs about that, that's, I gotta tell you.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, we do.
Uh, I I move to authorize contribution of up to five thousand dollars to the Wausau Convention and Visitor Bureau for the Executive Director's Search contingent on the execution of a contract with C V B before year end twenty twenty-one.
A motion by Manel, second by Hushain. Uh, anymore on the discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so Carrie, uh thank you for uh supporting my mouth. Uh, fifty-seven, he's been for Hinner Springs Utilities from Marathon County.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ermeling?
Second.
Second by Feeny. On the discussion.
We're, so are we giving up land in front of the new, in the new, at our new facility for this? Is that what the intention is?
That's a thought on how we could acquire the land that they're talking about. I don't, there may be some stipulations, they can't even.
But what, I was just, so they can't sell that to us?
The the land on Camp.
Camp Phillips.
They may not be able to, I don't know if we got them yet. We really haven't looked into that yet. This was something that the county board or the, I should say, the infrastructure committee came up with after we had worked with staff to get the eastman land that's drawn up, so. I I wouldn't, I wouldn't be in favor of granting that.
Well, it's.
Until we know where we're going. Well, that was a suggestion on how we might come up with any, if we have to pay for it, if they're gonna insist that we compensate them, I guess.
Because the possible future expansion of Camp Phillips?
Right.
Okay.
It seems to be much more significant than a little square that they.
I don't know how much it is.
Well, that's something I guess we would need to verify. Just something in principle we talked about and what we can, we certainly get the detail on it as far as valuation.
And and then shifting possibly that intersection, if it goes roundabout to the east, it'd be that portion plus up a little bit along with the school. Okay, I mean, so it, we would maybe do that anyway, so you're saying, but I don't know what the land.
I guess to trust you, Manel's question, I guess the method or how we arrange for the compensation of this property is yet to be determined. We just put that out as a thought at the beginning.
But now, okay, so we're committed for two years to have it in Eastman?
Resolve this for two, you know, two years to resolve it, although I don't know what happens if you don't. It's all what happens if they have it in there.
Take up the stuff?
Yeah, so I, I just, we shouldn't be uh laughing at this point, I suppose. But uh anyway, as a practical matter, yes, what happens? I don't know.
There is a, there is a map of the area that the Eastman goes through in the package, at least there was.
It's a remnant chunk from the highway construction, it's probably not gonna have a high valuation. Again, whether or not it can actually be sold, I don't know. If there's any prohibition on them selling it or transferring it, that has to be determined right now.
What's your pleasure?
We have a motion to.
Yes, we do.
Actually, it should be a motion to acknowledge, that's the way it's written. It's the county resolution, it's not ours.
Right.
Yeah, correct.
Acknowledge.
Knowledge, okay. All right, anymore in discussion?
Um, I believe it's acknowledge the resolution and approve the Eastman.
Then I know.
But in terms of the Eastman that we.
It suggests the division of the question into two parts because there's two separate issues. One's acknowledging the county's resolution, the other one is approving them.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we have a motion for which one or both?
I thought I was doing the most.
Mm-hmm, I I did too. Can't you do both?
Well, technically, you're not supposed to.
Yeah, so tech, tech, technically do it twice, Barb.
Okay, I, you lost me. I move to acknowledge county board resolution R forty-four dash twenty-one.
Motion by Ermeling?
Second.
Second by Feeny? And uh anymore on the discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Okay, and so Carrie, Barb, on your uh.
Okay, and then a motion to approve the temporary Eastman from Marathon County for water and sewer utilities between County Trunk Highway X and Hinner Springs Plaza.
Second.
Second by uh, motion by Ermeling, second by White on the discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, fifty-eight?
Abstain.
I abstained twice by Zong, okay? Fifty-eight, Dog Park Donation. Move to approve by Sagami?
Second.
Second by Feeny? Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, so in the past, when we there were other um memorials that were brought up. For example, during the uh Parks and Recreation Committee meeting, we, in the past, in the, in the past um term, uh or the last year, we brought up the fact that there were discussions about granting memorials to individuals that had been contributing, major contributors to the park, et cetera. Um, for example, a good example was the baseball um memorial that was gonna be dedicated to the flag and um the committee at that time voted against uh putting, putting a memorial there due to the fact that the individual that um the, the memorial dedication was to somebody that did not contribute, you know, that in a sense, they did not contribute much to the, to the, to the flag, to the baseball group there. Obviously, I don't know, Mr., I don't know um the chefs very well. I know I did ask um Director Osterbrink whether the chefs have been um major contributors to the dog park and from my recollection, um Director Osterbrink said no. Um, I could be wrong or am I stating that correct here?
Yeah, um, they, I mean, they're just users of the park. Um, actually, um, committee member Corvino is the one that actually knew, knows these individuals because he visits the dog park on a regular basis and he's like, if you went to the dog park, you would know these people because they were there every day.
Yeah.
Um, since they um moved to Wausau, they got a dog and then he had passed away earlier this year. And this was something, this was something, a place that was, you know, they loved to go, they love spending time with their dog and they just wanted it. As far as the kids, they wanted to make a contribution for their, from their parents to the park and that's really was the goal for them was just a way to remember their, their pet and their time they spent there and uh but as far as, you know, their involvement, as far as the dog park or the community.
I I do I, did I not recollect that I thought it would go to the parks in.
It did, it did.
Then you would go from there.
It went to the park.
And and but I know, but I I thought as a board, we didn't want it to come here, we wanted it to go to you and then with the recommendation from your department and the Parks and Recs, it'd come here.
Yeah.
I kind of thought this was proper procedure, no?
No, it it is proper procedure.
It was, it was recommended to be approved at the park and committee.
Correct, and I, and what the point I was making here is that in the past, we voted to grant memorials to individuals that's made major contributions to that uh, uh to wherever they're gonna place that part of that memorial. So for example, in the, um, in regards to the uh, to the baseball, the baseball group, they, the, uh, the individual, his family, if I recall, wanted to place a, uh, place a memorial at the flag there in honor of their grandfather or their father in some sort here. But then the individual there did not contribute, you know, his, his history was not, you know, was not a, did not contribute to some sort. And I'm not trying to be, you know, but I want us to be consistent with how we're provide, um, to, you know, want us to be consistent with who we're granting these memorials or otherwise, for example, I could just end up saying I wanna plaque for my, you know, for something else on there.
Well, Mrs. Jaeger, I thought Mrs. Jaeger's family.
It was Mrs. Jaeger, yeah, her, her, her grandchildren.
Wanted that because she, and they're, because she liked watching baseball and she was a lifelong and I thought we said yes.
And we granted that that once, but the one I'm referring to is a different one. Um, and that one actually was withdrawn after we brought up that discussion. I believe the reason why we did the Jaeger is, it was because they were major contributors to our community. I believe the reason why we did the Jaeger is, it was because they were major contributors to our community here in a sense here, from my, from my recollection.
I don't remember the contribution. Do you guys?
I don't remember that.
No, I just remember.
I think it was more her contribution to the town slash village of Weston. She was very active in, in a lot of your.
Right.
Right, a lot of four reach.
You know.
Yeah, yeah, little league, yeah.
She also was active in the, the, um.
She was my wife's four reach lady.
You know, I mean, I think that was, I had, hasn't on that, but on this one, I agree with E. I, I just think, um, how are you gonna, I've got a dog, I mean, can I put bench up for, well, I mean, how many people?
How many dog, how many benches do we have in the Dog Park?
Uh, right now, we have three.
How many do you need?
How many could you use?
Um.
When do you start saying that's enough?
We could probably add, uh, well, we're limited there, just due to, we can't do anything on the landfill cap.
Okay.
So we're limited to the area that we could do, uh, but we could, we could probably add, you know, three, four more.
Comfortable.
As far as more portions off the cap. Uh, so all three right now are located right at the entrance. So there's a wood one there, a concrete one, and then there's a concrete one on to the east, and then, uh, the only other place we have any tables or benches is right behind the advanced school site. There's a portable table back there.
Okay.
But if it comes back in, that you're saying that you don't have room for it, then.
Right, and that, and that's, and that's the way, so.
The park committee might say no too.
Yeah, so some of the discussion that was brought up, which he brought up, was the Jaeger bench was, for Eddie Jaeger, was approved right before the policy that was drafted, was approved. So there is a policy in place now as far as accepting, accepting like memorial donations, um, and it lays out some of the guidance or guidelines as far as, but it still leaves discretion to the board if they wanna approve it or not, but it does, you know, like, no repetitive memorials, so there's one here for World War One, we don't want another one for World War One, so there's multiple guidelines in there, but it lay out some guidelines like as far as individuals, their contribution to the community, or just, you know, I guess, how well they're known in the community, stuff like that, um, and, you know, when the Jaeger family was brought up, obviously, having the, you know, right, the, uh, business here in town, they've been around a long time, her name's been around, I mean, I never knew her, but I knew her name when they brought the request in.
Yeah.
You know, so, um, these individuals, like you said, that's where you get diverse, you know, different people on the, on our committee, where, you know, Mr. Corvino knows these people, you know, interact with them on a daily basis, where I wouldn't even have any idea who, who they were, right, who they contacted.
So, so we set up a, a policy, and we, the policy goes to your department and your board, and then it gets here, so you're right, I mean, it can be made here, but that is the policy we set up, that it goes, you know, through Sean and his department and, and committee. So go ahead.
This was approved by the committee.
Yep, yep.
And then you asked the committee to approve that.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And it was unanimous.
Yep.
Am I correct?
I think I voted against it.
Did you?
I was the only one that voted against it, but, uh, I, I wanna state that the reason, and what I'm bringing up here is not that I'm against the chefs having that there, but maybe an evaluation of our policy again here, just to make sure that, uh, we set criteria on, on what memorials should be dedicated to. I, I, I definitely agree with Barb, I'm, I'm a little concerned about eventually here, we all suddenly have a bunch of memorials that's just there, and taking up, and we have limited, from my understanding, we have limited places that we can actually place memorials, and I, I just don't want it to be, to be, you know, I, I just don't want it to be filled with, uh, with, uh. Memorials as well too.
Well, to Sean's point though, I mean, when it would become uncomfortable, or too many, or too populated, you would then make that recommendation.
We make the recommendations.
To the community, saying, we, where, where can we go? We have no room.
Right, and that's.
He would almost have to say, all right, that's enough.
But, but then all the question is, what if there was an individual that donated, donated, you know, so quite a bit towards that part, um, to renovate it, and then now there's no room, you know, just, just throwing that out, that I would rather have us be proactive than reactive, reacting to something specific.
Yeah, I guess I, I.
First, then you.
I guess we have a policy, and this bench does not follow that policy. If we're not gonna follow.
How does it not follow?
Because individuals, if they contribute to, or I, how would you put it?
That's in there?
That's in there.
Okay, I did not know that.
It's like he has just been saying.
Okay, I did not know that.
Yeah, I, I believe, yeah, I believe we've done that in the past, this walk-in, we evaluated, we evaluated, when we looked at these, there was questions were brought up, like, the one I keep going back to was that, uh, the memorial, the, the, I, I believe it was by the baseball flag, you know, and I believe, and I believe the committee specifically asked if, um, that individual has contributed in some way, and we were told no, and then even, then the committee re-titled it to a different meeting, and then when we brought it up, the individual withdrew, withdrew his, their, withdrew their request, and the reason why.
So that's how we never heard it.
Well.
It never got here, okay.
But, so, all they did was withdraw who they were gonna put on it. They, they still kept the request for, to put the flag up, but the, they were gonna do like donated by, you know, in this person.
Which is different than.
Yes, and this person wasn't involved in baseball directly. He's got grandkids that did, and so they was, they, they kept the flag request, but they just withdrew the, be, having the name on it.
Okay.
So that's how that one unfolded. It was a little bit different, uh, but just to, just to touch base, just one more thing, I've actually, this year, we've, we've, in the last month, we've received at least three bar requests, um, for people wanting to donate things, um, but they call, they wanna do this, I send them the, the policy, um, but we haven't heard back from anyone.
Okay.
So, but this is a, it's been a different year for sure, I mean, um, you know, we got the Eddie Jaeger one, which was actually last fall, it was early, it was last year, um, so, I mean, we've had four requests this year, but the, the policy is just really guidelines, it's not strict as far as this has to be, it's just guidelines on, um, you know, receiving that type of donation.
Hushain?
If we have enough bench out there, it shouldn't even get to the, get to the agenda, because there's no reason to come here and say, well, we got enough, we deny it. It should be denied right at the beginning when they bring it here, say, we're not gonna put them on the agenda, we added it.
Mr. President, I call the question. Are you finished?
As for this project, this one goes, the park committee approved that, and I'll make, I'll make my motion based on that.
There already is a motion.
Yes.
Yep. So, Hushain, um, a motion to approve.
Correct.
And a second by, I believe that was me. It was Nate?
Yes.
And we were on discussion. I need a lot of help tonight, and the discussion is over. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
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 Three noes?
No.
Okay, you motioned to approve it.
I, I seconded it to open discussion.
I mean, you're changing. Okay. Okay, so that's, uh, four against three. Approved, okay, so Ermeling, uh, Zong, and Feeny are on those, okay, so it's approved. Fifty eight, fifty nine, demolition of Yellow Banks restroom facility.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ermeling.
Second.
Second by Zong. Uh, any more on the discussion?
Which one?
What, fifty nine?
Yeah, uh, fifty nine is, uh, Yellow Banks, right?
Yep.
Correct.
Yeah, there's the, uh, four thousand twenty five to tear down disposable materials, or there's the sixty eight hundred to tear down, dispose of, and restore Yellow Banks restroom site.
Oh.
Yes, there's, there's two quotes.
It's not awarding anything.
One is a higher amount, you should always, uh, in your motions, who you're awarding it to, for how much.
Good point.
Good one.
Okay.
I might, I am, I was interpreting as the recommendation.
There's, yeah, there's three recommendations.
Those recommendations.
The recommendation from the committee was still awarded.
Record awarding the contract.
Okay, my staff, recommendation from the committee.
I made the motion, I will believe, I re, I made a motion to recommend awarding the contract to Tito Escalating in the amount of four thousand twenty five dollars to tear down, dispose of the materials, and restore the Yellow Banks restroom site.
There you go, that's it.
And second by Zong.
Yes.
Any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, number sixty, yellow portable restrooms at Yellow Banks.
Motion to, we'll get it back up there.
Make sure it's not the.
Come on, you let somebody else try it, Barb. The recommendation was the second one.
Yes.
Move to recommend awarding the contract to Green Valley Septic, one handicap and one standard unit at a cost of five hundred thirty five dollars per month and three thousand two hundred ten dollars annually for Parks and Recreation Committee recommendation.
Motion by White, second by Feeny.
Yep.
On the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, Yellow Banks well, number sixty one.
So this one actually is just, uh, do we, we discussed the Yellow Banks well, we have a thirty three foot deep, it's a private well for public consumption.
Pretty shallow.
Which is completely different, so it's got a thirty three foot deep well, thirty foot casing, the case is starting to deteriorate, we had some problems with the well, the spring, the pressure switch, and the control both went out of it, and, I mean, the water quality is really bad, uh, so we talked.
Is it for, for what consumption?
It's for public consumption, so it's a public, private well with, for public consumption, so we actually have to have it tested annually by the health department. We have to submit the startup procedures to the B and R every spring, um, we usually even chlorinate it each year, uh, it actually passes, actually, after we chlorinated it. But most people would drink it just through the color and smell of the water, uh, so we went through the process this year, but, you know, with the, we had about a hundred dollar expense in starting it up, um, and making the repairs, but there's not a lot of use for that well, I mean, if there's drinking fountain there, we don't see a lot of use, we're just thinking, you know, it's a civic expense that the village should continue to have. We know that the well casing is deteriorating, and will have to be repaired or replaced, um, and so staff was, brought it up to the committee, if we should just pursue and give costs to, uh, cap the well, and just, just continue use of it, because there's no, there's no requirement for us to provide water, there's other parks we don't provide water at, um, so it's just really, you think we should continue operating the well with the expense, or should we just get a cost and bring it back for capping, and that was where the park, park and rec committee, it will come back, because we would go and give costs for, um, capping the well, if that was the direction.
Approximately cost?
Um, we briefly discussed it at the park and rec committee, uh, but, so that was something that the village used to consult on, but now you actually have to have a licensed well driller, or somebody to cap it, so we don't know the cost, that's something we would move forward with if we thought that was, if that was the direction you wanted to proceed with that.
Doesn't have to be filled in with that, Nate?
Yeah. And we have Will on, Will on staff, he works with plumbers to get them, working with private contractors, get their wells capped too, and that is really, you know, what we're looking for, if that's something you feel like we should continue doing, because it's not a huge expense, but it is something that, you know, we don't see a lot of use out of it, the water quality is bad, and now we have the, the well casing that is deteriorating to the point where they may have to re-drill or replace the entire thirty foot casing.
I move to abandon the Yellow Banks well.
I'll, I'll second it, I just wanna make a comment, if I recall, Director Osterbrink, I know that Administrator Donna also mentioned is that if we were to replace it, or, you know, replace it, uh, if we were to keep it, we would have to replace a lot of the casing, et cetera, and it's probably a cost just as much as removing, abandoning the well as well too, from my recollection, if I recall correct.
Like abandonment would actually be a lot less than.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, the other thing we had talked about is, you know, for the few, for the future, if we did have running water restrooms or anything out there, that well would not be sufficient to fly about, that would, a new well would have to be drilled regardless.
Yep.
So.
Motion.
Too far for them to walk across to where the, uh, disc golf courses in the future, uh, restrooms are going to be?
Possibly.
Motion by Feeny, second by Zong, any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, sixty two, Mockmiller, mockmiller park vandalism.
And this is just another one where I've mentioned in my reports throughout the spring, last fall, uh, all vandalism, I mean, this year was quite extensive at, at the beginning of the year, um, with all the soap dispensers getting ripped off and paper towel dispensers, we had three parks get hit in one night, um, we reinstalled them, and literally got hit again, so Mockmiller's been without soap dispensers and paper towel the entire season this year, um, and so Michael was talking with Mark Thewitt at Schofield, and he mentioned that they had done some time locks, programmable time locks on their shelters in City Schofield, and we thought, well, maybe that's something we would look at, and it's just something, should we look at it? Should we look at some programmable locks? Uh, Mockmiller's set up a little bit different than most of our restrooms, because there's actually electricity in the restroom, or most of our restroom don't have electricity inside of, um, if that's something we should look at, you know, we could, depending on how programmable they are, we could program them so they only open up for, you know, the nights baseball are there, or when there's groups having them rented on the weekends, or the other thing is, you know, do we keep locked up except for when groups have them reserved? I know City of Wausau does that with a lot of their park shelter and bathrooms, they lock them before the group, they lock them back up after the group, um, so that's some of the discussion we had, um, you know, we don't know exact prices, this is basically just, you know, if you want us that, to go that direction, we would go and get some costs together for proceeding forward to do Mockmiller for now. That's the part that they've been concentrating on a lot.
So they're, they're smashing soap dispensers and?
And the paper towel dispensers, so literally, I mean, we, they, they smashed them all at all three parks, and we reinstalled them, and then they re-hit Mockmiller again and again, so there's been no paper towel and no soap dispensers the entire season out there.
Any complaints?
We have not gotten any complaints about not having anything in there, is what.
So they can wet their hands and figure out how to soap up these schools like this. You know what, I, I don't know, uh, Hushain, I'm sorry.
How many bathroom are there?
Uh, we have seven facilities.
Oh, I'd be, seven over?
We have seven, we have, I mean.
Uh, Mockmiller, it's just.
Just, well, just one of Mockmiller, just, just one men and women.
Yeah, how many, how many bathroom there?
There's just one men and one women side.
Okay.
One facility.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was, I was gonna mention that, I believe, uh, during our spring, they also started firing there unfortunately, right?
Yes, yeah, right before, right before a meeting, they had started a fire in the sink, uh, they did turn and break one of the toilets, uh, plumbing off earlier this year. There's been a lot of issues and some of my head.
So if we go to programmable, um, locks, will they then just vandalize that?
Um, they haven't had any problems with those, um, it's got electronic lock set, so literally like it's, it goes to a twelve volt transformer, which you could do like in our chase area where our plumbing is, um, and then the latch just goes, and then they have a, basically an emergency exit button, so if somebody would get trapped in there, say, at ten o'clock when they lock up automatically, there's a button inside you could push to get out. So I'm sure it wouldn't take long for the kids to figure out what time they get locked up, and yes, then they'd probably just stay in there, and then when they wanted to get out at nine o'clock, they just push the button, but.
The lock should be sensitive to vibration, and once the vibration is at a high enough level, then, then it should lock and lock them in there, that's what should happen. And we can hear them screaming till next morning when we let them out. Hushain?
They work very well, and you don't need anything inside, you just turn the handle, it'll get open, you can program it, get open, say, at eight o'clock in the morning, and get closed at five o'clock in the afternoon, and that's the end of the story, and it worked very well. We used it other place, my pardon, there was three bathroom, we used it there, and we had the same problem, randomness and everything else, so it's open then in the daytime, it gets shut down at night, I was just, we haven't had problem.
I also wanna make a comment that it does not say that we're purchasing it yet, we're just looking at the pricing.
Right.
I move to investigate the installation of programmable locks at Mockmiller Park.
Motion by, motion by Feeny, second by White. On, any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, sixty three, Human Resources HR, committee recommendation for reclassification and wage adjustment of certain employees referred to eight two twenty one HR minutes attached.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Feeny.
Second.
Second by Zong. Uh, on the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, I, is there any attorney referrals? Uh, move to closed session per nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent C, move to closed session to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility, administrator evaluation.
I move to enter into closed session under nineteen eighty five, parent one, parent C.
By Feeny. Second by Hushain. Second by Husheng. Local.
Ermeling?
Aye.
Feeny?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Madel?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.[1786.44]